Order, Clark Bujawal, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcox.
President.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tousen is absent. Councilmember Simmons?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
Thank you. All right. I entertain a motion for agenda approval.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any changes, updates to the agenda? Uh, Councilmember McLean?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor. Um, I have one item, which is, yeah, letters, yes, eight, section eight, letter C honoring First United Methodist Church, and it's my hope that we can move that further up on the agenda as, as far as might be practical.
Uh, would folks be okay with moving it just right after the proclamation? It's just, it's moving it to the presentation?
Yeah, presentation.
I didn't, I'm not hearing you.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
All right by me.
All right. Okay. All right. So. I'll just move to letter D.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Any other changes? Councilmember Simmons?
Oh, I just note in our packet, we didn't actually have the minutes.
I'm so sorry.
Attached. So I would just postpone that.
Okay, so we're gonna take that off. Um, I think every time you have that one, so. That to our next agenda?
Two forty-five.
Yep. Any others? All right. Uh, on favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any appose? Someone moved to excuse, he told us he had a wedding.
Move to excuse Councilmember Tousen?
Support.
You're moved and supported. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any appose? All right, thank you. Okay. This will be our first opportunity for public comment. So members of the audience, you'll have three minutes to address council. What I will do is I will start with those who signed up on the list and call you by name, and then I will move to hands in the audience and then hands on Zoom. We ask that you please approach the podium if you are able, speak into the microphone so folks can hear you, um, not only in the room but online. Please be respectful and stay within your three minutes. Um, we will greatly appreciate that. Um, and so first I have Mark Hergot. Good evening.
Good evening. Our Hergot one eleven miles. Uh, I would like to recap last year in about three minutes. DPS has been suffering for decades with inadequate facilities and gave council an ultimatum. That resulted in a recall effort that ultimately failed to remove the most progressive council member. DPS is still suffering, but money is being spent to improve the situation. Many on this city council backed the less qualified candidate for sheriff. His candidacy ultimately failed. Now a progressive sheriff has a chance to prove herself during a period of massive uncertainty. Whether she succeeds is in part due to the support of municipal governments and their policing agencies. I highly suggest you put aside pride for the sake of community. Many on this council supported a third ward candidate who simply did not have the ground game of a twenty-year resident that will join you on that day's next meeting. I suspect some of you have poor feelings about how that election went down. I am going to be frank. The third ward knows what it is doing and who it is sending. Finally, I must implore you to take stock in what the advice of people that have larger wallets than I have has done to your reputations, your October meetings, and your blood pressure. Just because someone is smiling and using kind sounding words does not mean that they are your friend. I intend to speak at these meetings much more often. I suggest that you listen.
Thank you. Uh, John Harrington?
Please. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Harrington at two oh nine North Huron Street in Ipsy. Been a resident here since nineteen seventy-seven. Have a couple of concerns. First off, uh, I've concerned about some of the programs that the council is, and is going into. I, like many other people in this community, are senior citizens that live on a fixed income. We've seen our taxes rise pretty dramatically, and if it continues and the way it's gone, many of us won't be able to stay in this community, which I think is a shame. It's gonna hurt a lot of people. So I implore you, when you're taking a vote, remember you are recommend, let me talk thirty. You are representing the citizens of this community and trying to do what's best for the citizens of this community. And giving away resources to other people that don't belong in this community and are not interested in the community hurts all of us. So please, if you start giving, start doing Water Street and you get affordable housing, at least let them pay taxes. You don't end up giving a lot of money to homeless people. I've seen what that's done in Portland, Oregon, since I have some property out there too. It was a beautiful city that was literally being destroyed by large numbers of homeless people. And businesses are moving out, property values are falling, residents are leaving in droves because they're afraid to stay downtown. So please, don't let that happen in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Latson Barbara? Barbara, I'm sorry, Barbosa? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, city council members. I'm here to comment on how council time is spent on criticizing, trying to intimidate individual council members and not on real issues of the community. I recently heard someone comment on how specific black council members were not being respected or supported when the fact is, when Councilwoman Simmons was being recalled, no member of council, black or white, except Councilwoman King, supported Councilwoman Simmons. So if there is call for respect and support, it should go for all, not just one or two. It is ridiculous that these council meetings go into early morning because nonsense is taking up council time because of malicious jabs at individual council members. Let council get on to their business and let others shut up. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Those are the only names I had signed up on the list. I will take hands from the audience if there's anyone who would like to address council.
Evening. Counsel, I want to, uh, thank a couple of council people that I observed downtown Ypsilanti during the cleanup. Uh, Patrick and, uh, also person Tousen was a part of that cleanup. Um, I have a great concern here. And the concern is I'm more now convinced that we do have homeless people. I spent the night, last night, from one fifteen to about fifteen minutes to three this morning over by the groin hole. And there was a total of eleven people sleeping on the concrete with old quilts and old dingy clothes. And I talked to some of them, and you cannot fool me that these people are just sleeping there 'cause they wanna be hanging out there. Those folks really don't have any place to, to go. And today I talked to a young lady. Uh, she told me that she had two children and they slept on the church porch. And then she indicated to me, she says, Mr. Tousen, if I was white and I went before the organizations, the people in power to tell them that my children and I didn't have any place to stay, they would assist me. And you know what? I have to, I have to say yes. Because there is a lot of racial prejudices that swarms around Ypsilanti, not only Ypsilanti, and other, 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 other cities. And I have concluded on, on Washington Street here. I cannot call it Washington Street. I can't call it Black Lives Matter Boulevard anymore. I have to call it Sad Street. Because there's a lot of sad things, a lot of sad occasions happens on that street, and a lot of sad people are there. And if any, I know you guys are probably doing something to, uh, uh, alleviate the problem, you know, bring it to a closure. But I would hope that you guys would expedite it because it's getting cold.
Thank you. Are there other members of the audience who would like to address council? Oh, Sherry.
Evening. Good evening. My name is Sherry Wander. I live at seven oh six Davis. I have spoken before you many times and am always willing and, and ready to call out when I think a decision is being made that is, is not in the best interest of the city. And I also need to be willing to call out when decisions are being made that are in the best interest. And so I just wanted to take a minute and thank council for your support of the Daytime Warming Center that we have hosted for the last several years at the Freight House and are planning on hosting again this year. Thank you for your support over the past years, and thank you for what I assume will be your support again this year. And please know the invitation is always there for you to come and share a meal or a snack or play a game of euchre with us.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Good evening.
The timer's not started. Hello. Glad to, glad to see that one of you, I know who you are, is going away soon. Um, but, you know, it's been a Bennett since the elections and, uh, you know what? I think I was like, you know, maybe I should do the thing that I wanted to do originally when coming to this council, so, um, I would like to say that there needs to be less complaining about the methods of which people express their dissatisfaction when, um, there has been a idea of you not listening. You know, you say you listen, you don't, you know. Hopefully that'll change soon. Now that one of you is going away. But I do wanna say that, um, one of, the resolution we were all up against has just been passed anyway behind committee, unfortunately. One thing I do wanna say is that hopefully it's dropped soon and not in undone. Um, and considering that, I wanna make it clear to everyone who was more so concerned about the noise instead of what we were actually saying, which considering Amber Fellows won, not that many people seem to be in favor of that resolution. And, you know, maybe consider listening to the people in charge. Um, and I just wanna say that Desire Simmons, you're probably one of the best people on the board right now. Thank you.
Say your name, I'm sorry.
Uh, Jonas Reimer.
Anyone else like to address council? Is there anyone online?
There is. Uh, the first person online is, uh, Councilmember-elect Amber Fellows. Councilmember, would you like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Hi, it's Amber. I am, um, zooming in just to ask about the, I saw the agenda item about the organizational meeting, and, um, I see that it, you know, it's scheduled for Monday the eighteenth. I know that Councilmember Simmons had a conflict with that day, so I'm just wondering if that conversation can, um, happen maybe sooner in the meeting, or at least, um, someone can contact me to let me know if that meeting date is changed so that all of council can be there. My schedule is fairly open. Um, I just think it might be good to move it to a date where Councilmember Simmons can be present as well. And if that does, if that does change, please, uh, contact me by phone or email right away. All right, thank you, and I'll see you next week.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else on that?
Yes, Cornelius?
Good evening.
Hi, hey, Corn, Ipsy Township. Um, yeah, I, I kinda wanna start by echoing what Sherry said. Um, that credit where it is due is important, and I do think that, you know, council has supported the Daytime Warming Center in a great way, and I hope that they will step up and do that again. Um, you know, I also have to echo some of the comments, um, about kind of the sad state of affairs in Ypsilanti right now. Um, and, you know, I, again, I think certain members of council have consistently voted against providing the services that would change that. And, you know, I've, I've been at, at, coming to these public comments, um, and speaking at public comment for, for months and months about the need for intervention, um, specifically regarding fatal overdose because of the impact this having on the black community here in Ipsy. And, um, for whatever reason, you know, council has been negligent in forwarding and passing resolutions or, or even agreeing to an MOU with harm reduction orgs for the city. And the latest SOS data shows that out of all of Washtenaw County, almost sixty percent of all of the fatal overdoses are in the city of Ypsilanti. So at what point are we gonna do something about it? I just, I, I really don't understand. You guys are faced every day right, right across the street with, with a serious housing crisis that is in your face. The numbers have been showing you for years that there is a serious overdose crisis in this city. What are we gonna do to fix it? And, and I think like the more important question is like, why have it, why hasn't it been done yet? Like what's really happening? And a few of the folks that spoke in public comment today addressed, you know, the division in council. And I, I do think that some serious conflict resolution needs to happen for the betterment of our community. Um, there is no reason why government actors should be the reason, should be the cause for the deaths of, of black community members in Ypsilanti for any community members really, but at the end of the day, I, I think you have a responsibility as members of the black community to support the black community of Ypsilanti. And the way that you guys have voted when it comes to providing services that would save lives is the opposite of that. You know, so I just, I urge you guys to put your differences aside. Whatever political games are being played, please put that aside and do the right thing. Um, because folks are dying, um, and they're dying more in your community than anywhere else in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kat Layton?
Good evening. Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Kat Layton, Ward Three resident. Um, I just wanna speak to a few things. Um, someone mentioned there's a lot of unhoused people recently in Ypsilanti, and yes, that is true because housing has been unaffordable on a national like level crises level for years. And it hasn't stopped, and COVID has definitely escalated it. And honestly, the city has done nothing to do any, anything proactive about it. Um, we have been a very reactive, um, community. Um, and I really do appreciate that the Warming Center daytime and overnight are being on the agenda today, and I really, really urge and, and hope that council votes yes again on supporting this, um, really, really crucial need during the harsh winter months. Um, but I'm also thinking like imagining other things that can also be sustainable for more of the proactive things. And I know that the Milledge for the Public Safety and Mental Health Milledge was recently passed by our community members. And so I really would ask council to create a resolution that allocates Milledge reimbursements to better services, um, community-based services that am, are actually aiming the root cause issues of public safety concerns, albeit other housing or a crisis response program, non-unarmed, non-police. Um, and I really do appreciate the sentiments that Reverend Tousen mentioned um, about how the sad state of affairs on Washington Street have been, and unfortunately, this is, has been going on for, for a long time. And unfortunately, when the city did have a citizen subcommittee report, um, drafted and, and, and provided eleven recommendations, city council at the time did nothing about it, but at the same time, we're passing resolutions like systemic racism is a public health concern and, um, that, that people need to be voting and, and where their values are based in, and that, um, we need to be having equity-centered, um, policies passed, and, and that now four years later, three years, two years later has drastically changed. Um, please use the Human Relations Commission to help writing these things. Equity, um, there's a lot of equity work still needed to do. Um, and we would love to help and in that capacity. Um, so thank you again for putting the support on, and please, yes, the conflict resolution is important. Um, there's a lot of divisiveness, and we need more policies and services passed in our city for supporting these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. That's it. All right. Anybody in the audience who has a burning desire to address council before we close public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Um, so we're gonna move into our presentations. Um, can you get the jersey, please? The first will be a proclamation honoring Jane Schmedekey. She, she's not here. You're getting the wrong, okay, my bad. All right. My apologies. Okay. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti wishes to acknowledge and pay tribute to exceptional individuals that greatly contribute to our community and quality of life. And whereas Jane Burd Schmedekey was an Ypsilanti resident from nineteen fifty-five until her passing, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and was a strong advocate for Ypsilanti's historic buildings. And whereas in nineteen seventy-one, Jane Schmedekey joined the Natalie, Nathalie Edmonds and with Nathalie Edmonds and successfully petitioned a developer to halt plants for raising five historic structures on North Huron Street, just north of St. Luke's Episcopal Church. And whereas in nineteen seventy-two, Jane Schmedekey was appointed to chair the Historic District Study Committee that researched and surveyed the city. And whereas in nineteen seventy-four, Jane Schmedekey co-founded the Ypsilanti Heritage Foundation that recognizes and supports historic preservation efforts throughout the city. And whereas Jane Schmedekey researched and lobbied for the Ypsilanti Historic District Ordinance that was unanimously passed by Ypsilanti City Council in nineteen seventy-eight, thereby establishing the local historic district. And whereas Jane Schmedekey served continuously as a member of the Historic District Commission for forty-one years, including thirty-four continuous years as chair, guiding and mentoring many along the way. And whereas Jane Schmedekey's historic preservation efforts extended to the protection of Michigan's architectural heritage as a founding member and board member of the Michigan Historic Preservation Network, which awarded her with its lifetime achievement award. And whereas Jane Schmedekey's tireless historic preservation efforts over more than fifty years have resulted in the city of Ypsilanti that is known for its wealth of historic buildings, and the city's residents, business owners, and visitors enjoy an improved quality of life and an enhanced sense of shared history, continuity, and community because of her efforts. Now therefore, I, Nicole Brown, mayor of the city of Ypsilanti, on behalf of the city council, do by, do hereby thank Ms. Jane Burd Schmedekey for her lifetime of advocacy and unparalleled leadership in historic preservation in the city of Ypsilanti. And we celebrate her life as we extend heartfelt condolences to her family and friends for their loss, given under the, my hand and seal of the city of Ypsilanti on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And we will get this over to her. Thank you. Um, next we have our updated report from Fed Up Ministries, Pastor Anna. I thought we moved that. I just put it as D.
That's okay. But I moved it a little bit. Okay. We have a slideshow for you guys.
Don't move it a little. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your all support of Fed Up Ministries this summer as we work to fill a vacant space and to feed hungry folks on the streets of Ypsilanti. I am Pastor Anna Taylor-McHans, and I am here with our Director of Programs, Maddie Tong. Um, and we are the faces of Fed Up Ministries. Could you go to the next slide, please? You might have, oh, it's, it's, it's the PDF, so do you have to scroll it? Wow, awesome. Um, I was, I was moved to tears earlier, so I'm still trying to re, if you guys don't know me, I cry a lot. So, um, when Preacher Tousen was speaking, um, I just, I was a little bit moved to tears because I feel like our people have been seen. So thank you for seeing them and investing in those who, um, are struggling to have all of their basic needs met, such as meals and hygiene, um, like showers. So the slide that you're looking at is actually, um, the faces of all of our team. It's our program staff, our office staff, some of our board member, actually all of our board members are on there, um, some volunteers, and then the interns that we have that are, uh, across the different master's programs from the University of Michigan. This is not, um, extensively, uh, the staff that we've had all summer. This is like our current team right now. So we've, you know, our, our staff cycles every three months. So these are the current folks, the current faces of Fed Up. Um, you can go to the next slide.
Yes, and, um, again, like Pastor Anna has already mentioned, we are incredibly appreciative of your support of Fed Up Ministries and the services that we work to provide all summer and beyond. And in supporting us, you are helping us meet our mission of meeting people where they are, serving individuals with dignity, employing our guests, and advocating for systemic change, all because we envision a world where the, we envision an inclusive and equitable environment where everyone is nourished in mind, body, and spirit, and where people are treated with values of people, dignity, equality, and service.
So just a quick little bit, cuz you know, we, we did all of this programming all throughout the summer. I want you guys to know, um, even though our services were concentrated here in Ipsy, we still did our services in Ipsy Township and in Ann Arbor and in Dexter and Celine and Chelsea and all the spaces. So part of what we do at Fed Up, we have the, the meal program is our heart and soul. Um, and we have our free meals, which is what we did downtown all summer. Um, and then our catering meals, which when we employ people, they are cooking for both meals. So they're cooking for, you know, their, their neighbors at their tent, and they're also, and the, the family down the street, and then also the folks that hire us. Um, we have our wash-up program, which is our shower facilities with the bathrooms, and then our mobile laundry trailer, which we debuted in October. Um, and it will be seen a lot more coming up, um, in the winter months as we partner with the Daytime Warming Center, and we're excited about that. Our worship service, we call that Lift Up. Um, and then our Thrive, uh, program is actually individual and group therapy led by our clinical MSW students from the University of Michigan. And then lastly, our Chef Camp program, uh, is something that we've done all across the county, and that program just helps, uh, kids to find a love of food and, uh, different things that they may never try, um, and cooking those things, chopping mushrooms, and it's just a joy to be, uh, with kids as they learn to love to take care of themselves in that way. Um, so all of our work at Fed Up is done by people who are directly affected by food and/or housing insecurity. Um, and all of our program staff currently have a lived experience of food and/or housing insecurity. Um, all right. Do you wanna do the next slide? We can go to the next slide. So you're about to see everything that we've been up to this summer in Ypsilanti.
Yeah, we can go one more slide. Yeah, so as you all know, um, we've been up to a lot. We were open Monday through Thursday, so serving breakfast and lunch four days a week. We did breakfast nine to eleven and lunch from twelve to three in June. And after the end of June, we realized that the bulk of people were coming between twelve to two, so we did shift our lunch hours to be twelve to two through July, August, September, October. So we did shift our lunch hours to be twelve to two through July, August, September, October. Um, but the space was still available to people um until three P M. daily.
We also served brunch every single Sunday except the third Sunday of the month, when Sherry and her group do their around the kitchen table brunch. Um, which they've been doing for two years, so we did not want to interfere with that. But we wanted to make sure that everyone knew that at eleven o'clock on a Sunday, they knew where they could get a meal in downtown. So we stuck to that time slot. So we do worship before. Um, and the first day that we started, that was actually before we moved downtown. It was in January. Uh, and we just were using the inside of the building and it was zero degrees outside. And we had eight people there, but at the height of our service this summer, when we did our lift-up service, we had forty people. And then there's typically another forty to sixty that come in on Sundays just to get a meal on top of that. So folks that uh you don't have to participate in our religious service to come in and get a meal. So we do the service first and then people can opt into that if they want to get coffee or want to want to come in and wash their face and um and then go in and out. And then the meal is served at eleven. So um that has been just a joy to see that program grow. And then you go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and um overall throughout the summer with our free meals, we average about eight hundred meals per week. And that is only including meals at this site and not any of the additional catering that we were doing. And we were able to do this with a lot of support from our local partners, including um Old City Acres, We The People and Holy Faith Garden in Celine.
And of course, Growing Hope.
And Growing Hope, yes.
Um, and you can go to the next slide, please. So some of our shower program highlights, um, I don't know why we didn't actually expect this, but this was a thing that we learned. Um, the 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 bathroom usage was much higher than the shower usage in the downtown community. So some days we would do like two showers and some days we were really busy and we did about twenty showers. Um, I will say the shower started to drop off after the first time we were vandalized. Because ever since then, we've struggled a little bit with making the propane work all the time. So sometimes on hot days, people didn't mind taking a cool shower, but on other days, um, it was, you know, you never knew if it was gonna work or not. So I'm pretty sure that probably affected the number of showers as the season went on. Um, but our, as you can see, the the trailer was used about five thousand times this summer. Because um our folks that would hang out or they would come by and they would just hop in, run into the bathroom and then come back out. Because we were open a total of about a hundred days. So um there there was just a need for people as they were walking by to come in and and access those facilities.
Yeah, and in addition to accessing the showers and bathrooms, we also provided hundreds of essential hygiene items. Including socks, underwear, razors, toothbrushes, toothpaste, deodorant and other products that a lot of people needed. Um, this also went beyond hygiene and we were also providing extra dog food and cat food and backpacks to people as well. And um we also partnered with Sherry, who so kindly worked as our harm reduction coordinator. To help us distribute life-saving supplies, including Narcan test strips, womb care items, safer sex supplies and safe use supplies. For example, um, clean syringes. And this provided us with plenty of opportunities to connect people to recovery services.
All right, you can hop onto the next slide. Thank you. So um this number that you see about how many hours our team worked, this is from June first until October twenty-seventh. So it actually is not that full last week, but that's when our pay period went through. So that's when I could pull the numbers. Um, and so the program hours are not Maddie, it's not um our meal program coordinator Tiffany, it's not my hours, it's not our director of programs. These are just our program staff who worked and did things like um sweeping the property and of course, making meals and refilling the water jugs. And cleaning the bathrooms at the end of the day and driving our catering jobs, that kind of thing. So um in that like total of about twenty-two weeks that we were in operation, some of our team members worked maybe ten hours a week, some worked closer to twenty. And then we have some like, oh, Courtney, is Courtney still here? She was a rock star this summer and worked sometimes like thirty or more hours. So like it just depended on people's capacity in the community, um, how much they were able to work. And so we are so grateful for um our folks who stepped up and said they wanted a job.
Yeah, and in addition to our staff who were employed with us through this employment program, we also created a hospitality team. Um, with local community members who were more ready for responsibility and not necessarily a job. And these were people who were showing up up at our space and taking ownership of it and taking care of it alongside us. And they helped us with um managing the shower trailer and the storage trailer, helping people get supplies when they needed them. And also helping just keep the property clean, keep us stocked on like filling up water, making sure there's cups, things like that. And also help with de-escalating situations as needed. And what we did was we asked our donors to provide gift cards for these folks and they got a gift card for every month um that they did volunteer with us.
Um, and then I just want to add that um, you know, those, we don't have ten staff that are currently unhoused at the moment. We have four, but that number has cycled throughout the summer. So um, you know, there have been uh we we have, we had ten new positions of people who were currently or most recently this summer experiencing homelessness in some way. Um, and or precariously housed. And so um it's been great to have those folks on our team. I think I did come up at a council meeting and say, could you turn the power back on somewhere at one of the parks or freight house? Because one of our team members kept being late for work, you know, as he's having to plug his phone in. So um, you know, but it it's been great to have those folks this summer. And along with all the things that they did at our headquarters, they did, you know, prep all of the food and learn some of our signature Fed Up recipes. Um, like our lavender lemonade and our backyard barbecue menu. And so they were cooking in the kitchen and they partnered with us to serve the kids that are in um Sugar Brook and West Willow at the camps that we partnered with the county for this summer. And um so they got to work all across the county and not just at this location, which was awesome. And I think we can go to our last slide. So in addition to these programs, um, I just want to say, and I don't think we got any fun pictures out there. That was U of M came and took some photos of us for their social work program. And so those are all our folks that wanted to pose in the picture. Um, but we did some really fun things this summer too, a couple of one-offs. So we did a scary movie night one day, we did a field day and that was, I think, me just trying to relive my childhood. So we um did like an egg race around the building and a water balloon toss and a hot dog eating con- contest. And folks just had like a lot of fun, just like being free for a moment, you know? Um, and so that was a real joy as well. And then you want to talk about our partners that we hosted?
Yeah, so we really wanted to make our space one where people could come together and come and know that they were going to be able to access more resources beyond just what Fed Up offers. This included working with Care Based Safety, who ran programming two nights a week and provided snacks and survival supplies and just a safe space to be. We had the Washtenaw County Health Department come out twice a month with their RV and their medical team. Wolverine Street Medicine also provided foot care, womb care and general support weekly at both our Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti locations. Home of New Vision was also there providing substance use disorder resources and support weekly up in Ann Arbor and in Ypsilanti. Um, Washtenaw Literacy came out monthly to support community members. We had Pet Pals Mutual A Group pass out dog food and and pet supplies. We had the CMH Crisis Response Team respond plenty of times to community members who needed support. And CMH's path team also knew that our spot was a space where clients could be found and reached when they did not have access to cell phones. So we really tried to serve as a central location for all of this.
Yeah. Guys, have any questions for us?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Uh, council questions? Comments? It was such a great presentation. Um, Mayor from town.
Um, thank you for the presentation and thank you for your services. This is uh, you know, I know there's been a lot of uh conversations about Washington Street. But I think sometimes the the services that you do provide have gotten lost in the shuffle. And um, thank you for being there and thank you for providing the services.
You're welcome. Um, one of the other surprising things that we didn't put in here was how many families. And not just like teenagers coming by themselves, because that did happen occasionally. But I'm talking like moms with like young children all summer long, um, babies, three-year-olds, seven-year-olds. Um, and just the the incredible need around that. And it it's making me question what more we can do. Because we had a good fifteen or twenty families that would come by on the regular um in our two hundred meals a day. Some of some of those were, you know, people that were right there and sometimes it was they took meals home, you know, to feed nine folks in their house and stuff.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation and your work. Could you maybe share any observations around what needs existed that you were not able to to serve during the year? Whether it's, I'm especially interested in things that were large numbers of of people that may have have had those needs.
So one of the things um that I'm thinking about is like outside of our program time, the numbers of poos that happened on the property. Um, was a thing and it still continues to be a thing, even though our trailers are gone. Um, the other day I was walking like literally three days ago and they were like, don't step in that poo. One of my my team members and it was just so nonchalant, like it's just become part of our, you know, existence over there. So that's been um a thing. And then um I didn't realize, even with the amount of like when I actually get the attention of CMH. And they show up and they're doing their work and they come back two or three times before they can actually do something. I didn't realize still how broken our system is for some of our individuals that just need more than that. Um, and today, one of our gentlemen who um got locked up back in June or July, he did seventy days in county and then went to rehab. And I talked to him this morning, he gave me his list of the things he needs, like a new tent and propane. So um, yeah, and some coats and some things like that. But he um, he was, he's just right back out on the street, like he did all those days in rehab. He said, Pastor Anna, I learned so much about myself while I was in there. And I was like, just for you to come right back in front of the beer cooler and be tempted with everything that put you in that space um in the first place. And so, you know, there's just a need around housing that that I don't know how we're going to fill. Um, and I I don't know that that can happen right here in the city. But I think that one thing I've learned is like we need the help of the municipalities that are around us, Superior Township, Ypsie Township. We need the county, like we need to have conversations with everyone. And like the gentleman said earlier, um, connecting, linking up all of, you know, the sheriff's department um with some of the work too. Because they also know our people um and and they're creative about some stuff. So instead of doing all this work in silos, we've, we gotta connect more. So I I learned just how much some some of our resources are just not enough. Anything from you? Okay. That was it? One more?
Thank you, Mayor. You talked about a couple of your partners, Care Based Safety, you mentioned CMH. Can you talk about the the extent that this was a connection while you we were working with them? The nature of the relationship between CMH and Care Based Safety and how they interact or complement each other or fail to complement each other?
I would say probably one of my other staff members that also works for Care Based Safety may be able to answer that more. Um, Fed Up's relationship with CMH um is definitely different than ours with Care Based Safety. I'll say that because CBS, like they used to, we had sometimes joint staff meetings just to know like, hey, these folks were having a rough day today. And like, we're leaving and y'all are doing programming tonight, so be aware, you know, you may need to de-escalate. But um in terms of CMH, like their structure is just so different that like when I call and I'm like, I need to speak to Joey. Like Joey knows these people, he knows what's going on. And they're like, well, Joey's like busy, can I just take your information? And I'm like, no, I need to talk to Joey right now. Um, and that has just been my like refrain. Now I know the names of like four other people who know our people enough that I can ask for them as well. And that's not an issue that we have with Care Based Safety, because I have all their phone numbers. And I'm like, you know this person, let's deal with that. So I think maybe just because CMH is like a a bigger and they have a, you know, wider area, um, it's kind of harder sometimes to get in touch with people. And sometimes I'm like, you know what, never mind, I've I've called the response line enough and you're not helping. I'm gonna call solidarity house and and someone who lives down the street is gonna come help me figure out how to deal with this person that we know. And that happened a lot this summer when um and then toward the end of the summer, I was like, this is a big deal. It was around the time we were vandalized. I said, this is a big deal. I'm afraid this person is gonna hurt himself. They finally started listening to me. So, yeah, but I don't know if you want to add anything? She would know more about the CBS.
Yeah. Many hats that I wear. I would say, you know, CBS has not been um particularly well-resourced by the county or the cities. And so um we're very grassroots and hopefully we will continue to grow. Um, but that has meant we've really built our ability to respond on relationships. And so we don't have the opportunity to have like a dispatch number yet. So Anna knows me, she knows my cell and can call it whenever. Um, whereas I think CMH is a more formal organization, has still not enough resources as we've heard, but more. And so they're able to like dispatch people out faster. Um, and then because um, because we had to be creative, we created a place-based response. So we were able to be on-site in the evenings when Fed Up could not be, which allowed us to partner very closely and build relationships with Fed Up staff, Growing Hope staff. And then also with the guests who were using Fed Up services.
Sherry, before you sit down, I'm sorry, I just want to ask about, I know, I think I know the answer, but Care Based Safety and CMH, is there any connection between?
There's no formal relationship. Um, I think, you know, we very much respect the work of CMH. And as we grow in our capacity, you know, may be able to, you know, create more formal or more deep organizations. Um, I know some of the folks through CMH because of my work at the day shelter and so have put those connections to use.
Any other, oh, Councilmember King?
Oh, I have two quick questions. Now that you are no longer downtown, or are you?
Our offices are still there and we are still using Growing Hope's shared kitchen, especially because it's gonna get real cold, real fast for our team to cook on the food trucks. So um, we're still there right now. It probably won't be a permanent thing, just because the building still is really small. So um, I mean, we're in conversation with Growing Hope about like, I mean, we are extending our lease for a while. Um, but we're not, we haven't been offering programming since October, uh, the end of October. And all of our programming will be done in other locations, like taking meals and being present at other spaces um for the rest of the winter at least.
So the other question is, how do you think downtown will suffer or will not suffer with you are not being down there? And if you are done for like this year, will services come back like another year, next year or years beyond?
That's a really good question. Um, we are in a lot of discernment right now. And by that, I mean, like um, like we, we don't want to leave this community. We know that there's a need for food in this community. We are struggling with like just the physical space that we're in, like there's not heat in the building. So we have all the heaters going and I was just freezing today and I said, I'm gonna have to get a a building blanket, you know, over my desk. So like, we're actually, we're looking for something practical and something that, I mean, a parking lot is wonderful to serve our meals. But something maybe more dignified for our folks as well, long-term. Um, and I did, I did stand up here and say, when we gave our first presentation, I wasn't gonna ask. I wasn't planning on asking for more money next year to do this thing again, like we was more of an experiment. Um, but that being said, like if there is a request, like we fully intend to continue serving the same amount of meals next year. We may just be driving the truck to people in two places again, um, depending on like where we end up. So, yeah, we are, we're actively looking for a space that has twenty-four-seven kitchen access, so we don't have to share. Not because we don't like sharing, but just because we do so much in our kitchen all the time. Um, like, for instance, today, the Samaritas Affordable Living at Sequoia Place in Ann Arbor, which is like an old Lutheran, old folks home, basically. Um, our little ladies, we love them. One of their board members, who used to be a member of my congregation, said, Pastor Anna, can you cook the turkeys for us for our dinner tomorrow? So we were trying to cook turkeys in the in the kitchen today, we're gonna have to reheat them tomorrow and slice them. And like, if we actually had our own kitchen space, we would just be able to cook them for the gals at the um, at the Affordable Living Home all day, one time, and then carve them and send them. So we've got to find something like that so we can function. But there will be a huge need around meals and just need around presence in the community. Maybe the library being open next summer will help fulfill some of that. I'm really hopeful. But um I am concerned, because there were lots of times when um things were, I'll say rough, but you know, the streets were bumping. And because we had relationships with people when we were there, sometimes we could distract people with, oh, we've got, we've got this today. You want to come get a plate and, you know, bring them away? And that's kind of my concern when we, basically every time that we weren't serving this summer, we kind of saw an increase in, you know. And even now, like we haven't been serving for a couple of weeks and yet, you know, the cops have been on the street, I don't know how many times. And it's not because we're calling them, but you know, there's been stuff going on, people are seeing. So I'm I'm concerned about that and I would love to, I don't, we don't want to leave in a harmful way. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any other, oh, Councilmember Sweet?
I don't have any questions, but um I just want to say thank you for the thorough report. There clearly um right is a need, as you know, as we all know. Um, so thank you for filling this critical gap in services that probably would have likely otherwise been unattended to. So appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Councilmember Simmons?
Just right quick, I just want to say thank you for the quick turnaround of the ending of your programming and then coming right to council with the report. I think it's helpful and um I hope that um the community members watching can really see the value of the work that you all did. Um, for in terms of the partnerships, but really just like the food. And we know how food costs are increasing. And um, so I think it's both like in terms of the food that you are offering, but then also the stabilizing impact of employment. I think is something I don't want us to miss also um in terms of this effort. Um, in helping people to be able to have stepping stones to longer terms, you know, sustainable abilities to be able to keep themselves housed. Um, in helping people to be able to have stepping stones to longer terms, you know, sustainable abilities to be able to keep themselves housed through employment. So. Um, just appreciation for that too.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we want to thank you again for the report so quickly, number one, because I know what that feels like. Um, and I also want to just thank you for stating. Around the silos and the need for more collaboration and the need for support outside of just the city. Again. We want to do our part, but we know it takes more than just us. And it's, it's wonderful to also hear when folks we are working alongside is spreading the message because I think that that has. Not always happened. And so I really, I appreciate that a lot. And so again, thank you all so much. Again, I I saw you down there all summer, you know, and we appreciate you. So thank you so much. Um, we're gonna keep it moving. Um, we have the Water Street.
It is, but I've, I've won, this will be a little bit longer.
Can we do that?
Do the other one.
That's what I was gonna ask. Okay. If we're, so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna do the resolution for First United Methodist Church, if that's okay with everyone, and then we'll go to Water Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to council members for your indulgence. This is resolution number two oh two four dash two four six, resolved by the Council of City of Ypsilanti. Whereas a Methodist circuit writer named Elias Patie wrote into Ypsilanti in May eighteen twenty-five to conduct the first church service in the fledgling Ypsilanti community. And whereas that first church service had five people in attendance, eventually churchgoers gathered in a one-room schoolhouse on Sundays. As the congregation grew, a brick building was constructed on North River Street in the eighteen thirties. In time, that building became too small for the still-growing congregation and. Whereas in eighteen forty-three, congregants purchased a lot at North Washington Street and Washtenaw Avenue. A framed wood structure painted white was built along the lines of a New England meeting house and contained one hundred pews for seating six hundred people. And whereas by the latter eighteen eighties, the church had again outgrown its sanctuary. And a new edifice with a bell tower was erected. This building was dedicated in eighteen ninety-two and has served the church ever since. And whereas the First United Methodist Church of Ypsilanti has served its community for two hundred years. Adding to the spiritual life of the community. And whereas in those two hundred years, the church and its members. Have contributed to local, national, and international efforts to alleviate hunger, poverty, and inequality, and have provided a place for like-minded people to worship according to the tenets of their faith. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Ypsilanti is pleased to honor the First United Methodist Church of Ypsilanti on its bicentennial. Highlighting its ongoing work to provide members a spiritual haven and support good works here and in the broader community. My sum of port.
Been supported. Uh, a discussion from council about this, other than a big thank you to First United Methodist Church.
I'll simply mention that we have a couple of congregants in the audience with us. Uh, Mark McClure and Karen Jania. Uh, are with us and uh, I'll call out um my friend, uh Barry LaRue, who's. You may recognize uh that some of the text uh is mostly coming from him. So um. It's a pleasure to be able to to honor you on, on the two hundredth anniversary uh of your, your organization. And it's nice to read across the. Two hundred years, how the, the congregation has grown, uh but also to kind of recognize that in that is the history of Ypsilanti as well and. And the good work that the church has done uh over that time in the growing community. So thank you.
Any other comments from council? All right. Seeing none, would you all please call the roll? Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, yeah, sure. Okay. Councilmember McLean, I took a picture with the proclamation. I know he said he was gonna call you up. Oh, okay. I told y'all I wanted to take a real quick picture. Where are we going? That one?
I guess.
I don't know. Maybe it's happened, maybe it's happened, come up here by the, y'all will come up here by the, the, the crest? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Make the niggas happy, make the niggas happy, make the niggas happy.
Okay. It's fine. Yeah.
There you go, Joe. I'll send it to everybody.
Yes, I want it on Elon Musk. Yeah. Did you pass that? Pass that there, we'll put that in there.
You know what, you're sitting trying to go forward to picture. Come on, friends, let's, let's take.
Friends, we gotta sign it, I guess.
Oh, I mean.
Is that what we doing?
Not officially.
There we go. Yeah, look at that, you need that on. I know. Told him no. All right. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you all for indulging us on that. Um, city manager, we're ready for the Water Street presentation. What? We doing something special?
We have a, a representative of AKT Peerless uh approaching along with uh Katie Jones.
Yeah, awkwardly close. Hey. Just. Hi, Katie.
Just how we like to do it.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody. How are you all this evening? We are gonna have a presentation this evening about Water Street and I apologize, I had hoped that we would be able to be before you long before this. Um, but we have been sorting some things out and getting some things uh together so that we had a comprehensive presentation for you guys. So tonight we have Scott Wazluski and Ryan Higuchi. You have not heard from Ryan yet. So Ryan has some information about a grant that we're gonna be applying for. And we also have um Jeremy McCallion as well from AKT Peerless, all presenting some information. So we have been. Working through an MEDC uh grant, as you know, and we've also been um racking down some financing that we had gotten through um Congresswoman Dingle's office. And so we've. Identified that grant as well. And so we have updates on all of that as well as a, a ton of testing that we've been doing for the last, I think. I was just counting the last twenty-three months that I've been at the city. So. Here we are.
Can't wait. Thank you. All right. Good evening.
Hi. Uh. I'm Scott, Senior Project Manager with AKT Peerless. Um. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Um, I'm gonna cover kind of a lot of ground, hopefully not take up too much time. Um, first, there will be an update about um all the testing that Katie just alluded to that we've conducted over the past year and a half. Um, also, uh, an update on the PCB cleanup plan heading into twenty twenty-five. Um, as well as Ryan's portion of the presentation, which will be introducing the EPA cleanup grant application. The purpose of the EPA cleanup grant. Application is to supplement the existing funding sources that Katie just mentioned, the MEDC grant and the HUD grant. Um, and I'm gonna start with a little bit of discussion about those funding sources, just so we're all on the same page. Um, so the city over the past few years has been really successful at um obtaining funding uh from a variety of sources to help. With assessment and cleanup of the Water Street site. Um, what we have been operating under for the last year and a half with respect to PCB site characterization. Um, is the MEDC grant. Uh, the MEDC grant uh totals approximately four point three million dollars. So that has funded PCB site characterization activities and is going to fund cleanup activities in twenty twenty-five. It has an expiration date at the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, in the meantime, the city has also obtained an approximately three million dollar HUD grant. Um, which will be used for assessment, not remediation, but assessment. Uh, on certain portions of the site starting in twenty twenty-five and that grant um goes out to twenty thirty-one. Um, and then in a few minutes, Ryan will be discussing the EPA cleanup grant application. Um. What we're asking for is up to four million dollars uh through that grant. Um, to supplement the existing funding sources and continue to build on the momentum of cleaning up the Water Street site. So if that grant is awarded, uh, there would be about a four-year window in which to use that funding. So the existing funding sources um are being used to essentially further the city's longstanding cleanup approach to the site. Uh, over the past twenty years, uh, the city has been targeting what I call spatially extensive areas of. Or what others have called areas of concern or AOC is for short. Um, these are areas of contamination that aren't just, you know, an isolated hotspot, but cover, you know, a wider area or greater depth. Around the time that the city acquired the Water Street site, uh, they conducted their own due diligence, environmental due diligence on the property. Um, in parallel, there were investigations completed by others on behalf of prospective developers of the site. So back in two thousand two, um, this map here depicts some of the areas of concern that were known at that time. Um, the areas, uh, the color shaded areas that are, I guess the pointer is not going to register on the screen, but um. The areas on the western and northwestern portion of the site uh were specific to heavy metal contamination, volatile organic compound contamination, and semi-volatile organic, organic compound contamination. The other two areas of concern identified at that time included. Uh, what was called a hypothetical lead removal area, which is the red shaded portion on the central portion of the site. Uh, and a hypothetical PCB removal area on the southern portion of the site. Between two thousand four and two thousand eleven, many of the areas of concern that were not specific to PCBs um and were not. Uh, specific to the, the lead removal area were remediated to some extent. Uh, with previous funding sources. Those areas are shaded in blue on this map. So all of those areas that were on the western and northwestern portion of the site in the previous figure, plus um another area of concern. The north central portion of the site and a small PCB cleanup area on the central portion of the site. Um, we're all subject to dig and haul operations to remove um significant contamination from those locations. Uh, the lead removal area and the PCB removal area became the, the last two major areas of concern that needed to be addressed. Those are both included in the purple shaded area on this figure. Um, the purple shading is um for the purposes of this figure. The target area of investigation um for the PCB site characterization activities that were completed over the last year and a half. Uh, another area of concern is the yellow shaded area, which we call the Eastern Marsh. It's the former Gilbert Park location. We have conducted some limited PCB site characterization activities in the Eastern Marsh. Uh, but um, based on those results. Uh, and the best use of funding at this time, it will require additional assessment uh with the HUD funding. Um, by two thousand one, after we had gotten involved and done some investigation work uh on behalf of the city. Uh, we had identified PCB concentrations greater than fifty parts per million at what we thought at the time were isolated hotspots. Uh, both in the lead removal area and the PCB removal area. We started digging deeper into what historical um activities could have caused the release of PCBs in those areas. As we presented to council last June or June twenty twenty-three, uh, we identified a few potential sources of PCB impact historically. Uh, one of them was the former manufacturing facility, uh, Commerce Motor Truck Company. Um, where it's believed that PCB impact is related to incidental or minor releases of uh PCB containing oil from hydraulic equipment, for example. Um, and potentially from the use of PCB containing oil as a dust suppressant for unpaid parking lots outside the building. Um, those releases typically resulted in relatively low concentrations of PCB contamination. The other two areas include the former Detroit United Railway Storage Yard, which is um adjacent. To the manufacturing facility footprint to the east. Um, Detroit United Railway was an electric railway. Uh, their rail cars had onboard transformers with PCB containing dielectric fluid. So um, our theory was that uh releases from transformer leaks. Or service operations resulted in surface contamination in the DUR storage yard. Uh, the final piece is the former marsh, which is along the southern portion of the site. Uh, the marsh likely resulted from gravel mining operations back in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. Um, and with the void being there, it was, you know, a convenience spot to dump non-native film material. So the source of PCBs in the former marsh, uh, really, all we could tell is um. The PCBs were there because they were attached to whatever material was dumped in that location. In early twenty twenty-three, so back in February of last year, uh, we expanded um slightly some investigations around the. Isolated hotspots of PCB contamination that we had identified in the lead removal area and uh what I'll call the Western Marsh. Uh, due south of the Detroit United Railway Storage Yard. The intent of um expanding that investigation was to see if there was a need for even more extensive site characterization. To clearly define the extent of PCB impact. Um, the results which are depicted on the screen with red being areas of heavy PCB impact and green being minimal PCB impact clearly demonstrated that there was a greater need. Uh, for site characterization activities to support cleanup operations. So what we've done over the past year and a half um is high-density sampling. Um, these, these are soil borings that were advanced um on a ten-foot by ten-foot grid. Uh, we did that across the entire Detroit United Railway Storage Yard and the entire Western Marsh. As well as two smaller locations within the former manufacturing facility footprint and in the Eastern Marsh. Um, the high-density sampling is consistent with TSCA's PCB site characterization sampling protocol. Just for specifics, in the DUR storage yard, we advanced more than seven hundred and fifty soil borings, collected more than twenty-three hundred soil samples for PCB analysis. Uh, we conducted an electromagnetic induction survey to see if there was evidence of buried rail spurs, um, things like that. We didn't identify any rail spurs with the, the EMI survey. Um, and then late last year, we conducted preliminary waste characterization sampling in the DUR storage yard. Uh, the intent of that sampling is to inform the landfill if there are other constituents of concern besides the PCBs. That could qualify the soil as hazardous waste on excavation for off-site transportation and disposal. So those parameters include heavy metals, including lead, uh, volatile organic compounds, semi-volatile organic compounds, um, and a couple of others. In the, the Western Marsh, uh, we advanced more than a thousand soil borings and collected more than six thousand soil samples for PCBs. The smaller area in the uh former manufacturing facility, uh, that investigation consisted of forty-nine soil borings and the collection of a hundred and seventy soil samples for analysis. Um, in both the form, former manufacturing facility footprint and the Eastern Marsh, the intent of those limited investigations. Uh, was to validate historical data that suggested that PCB impact was present um deep below ground surface. Uh, we're talking eight to sixteen feet below ground surface. Um, so. We didn't really understand why PCBs would be that deep. Um, and the data uh were all dating to the late nineteen nineties. So that was the purpose of the limited investigation in the former manufacturing facility footprint and is uh also the Eastern Marsh. Um, where we also drilled forty-nine soil borings, but collected seven hundred eighty-four soil samples. Um, so in total, we're talking close to two thousand soil borings, close to ten thousand soil samples. This generated a lot of additional data. Um, so now we're gonna talk about what the data tells us. Uh, to compare what we knew, you know, back in two thousand two to what we know now, um, just to return to the area of concern map. The, the main area of our investigation um. Included the lead removal area and the PCB removal area. Um. After the DUR went out of business in the early nineteen thirties, uh. the DUR storage yard became a metal junkyard, and it was a metal junkyard from the 1940s up until 2000. The southern half of the DUR storage yard is the hypothetical lead removal area. Before the PCB issue was identified, the lead contamination in the lead area was frequently associated with the metal junkyard operation, not the DUR storage yard. And as I said earlier, the PCBs that were identified in the PCB removal area were just generally associated with the fill material that was dumped. What we know now, thank you, thanks to the 2023-2024 PCB site characterization activities funded by the MDC grant, is that the heaviest PCB contamination on Water Street spans the lead removal area and the Western Marsh. The PCBs in the DUR storage yard, based on the results of the preliminary waste characterization sampling, are also positively correlated with the lead toxicity characteristic results. So beyond just the spatial distribution of the PCBs, which suggest a common source of the contamination, it's also become clear that the lead contamination that's in the DUR storage yard is probably from the same source as the PCBs. So we have to look at multiple lines of evidence to assemble like a better picture of what happened in the past that resulted in the contamination that we see today. And based on the lead toxicity characteristic results, the distribution of the PCBs, and also clusters of soil borings in which paint debris has been identified, which are also located in the same spot as the highest PCB concentrations and the highest lead concentrations. What appears to have happened is that the DUR storage yard was conducting railcar service activities, including onboard transformer service, paint stripping and painting, all in the same location in the DUR storage yard. What that likely resulted in is a generation of debris piles that are soiled with dielectric fluid containing PCBs and contain a lot of lead-based paint. When those debris piles accumulated to an extent that wasn't convenient, there happened to be a pit out back where that debris was picked up and deposited. So what we have found is that the lead area and the PCB area are not distinct and separate environmental conditions, they're actually part of the same environmental condition, which is great. I mean, that's not great, but it's the big picture. It's conceptually defined now. We know it happened. And it's also spatially defined, both vertically and horizontally. So now there's no question about where it came from. There's no question about how far it extends. It is defined to the point where it can finally be cleaned up and addressed. And be a little anticlimactic at this point, but in the former manufacturing facility footprint, the limited investigation, it did validate the fact that there are PCBs buried between eight and 14 feet below ground surface. The good news with that is the maximum PCB concentration in that area is only 1.5 parts per million, so it's really low. It's consistent with other results that have been obtained from the former manufacturing facility over the past couple decades. So the PCB impact in that area is relatively low in concentration. It poses relatively low human exposure risk, and it's compared to the DUR storage yard legacy contamination, it'll be less expensive to deal with. We had proposed an incremental sampling methodology investigation for the former manufacturing facility footprint as part of the MDC grant-funded scope of work. But due to the severity of the contamination of PCBs and lead associated with the DUR operations, the ISM investigation is going to be deferred and be funded with the HUD grant. On the other hand, is the, the results of the limited investigation in the Eastern Marsh are problematic for a variety of reasons. There's up to 16 feet of fill material in the Eastern Marsh. PCBs have been identified throughout that 16 feet. They've been detected infrequently and at a very wide range of concentrations, from as low as less than one part per million to more than 100 parts per million. The contamination in the Eastern Marsh is also not vertically or horizontally defined. So it's much more difficult to put together a cleanup plan for something that's so loosely defined and so random. So ultimately, what will be proposed is a HUD grant-funded additional assessment of the Eastern Marsh to provide additional data that would be used to support cleanup activities with the EPA cleanup grant if that grant is awarded. So heading, heading into next year, the top priority is the cleanup of the DUR storage yard legacy contamination. In parallel with that, HUD-funded assessment will be completed to set the stage for further cleanup activities in the future as necessary. The cleanup goal for the DUR storage yard is still to get PCB concentrations to less than or equal to one part per million. We have vertically defined PCB contamination to that level already. A secondary objective of the DUR storage yard cleanup will be to remove lead that is hazardous waste from the site so that burden is not on a developer in the future. The DUR storage yard, which is the northern two-thirds of the area shown in this graphic, that's expected to take, as of now, to take up to $1.5 million to remediate. There's $2.5 million left in the MDC grant for cleanup. So the remaining $1 million would then be used to do as much as we can in the adjacent portion of the Western Marsh. If we can't achieve the same cleanup goal of less than or equal to one part per million, we would prioritize the heaviest PCB impact for excavation, off-site transportation, and disposal. And I'm going to turn it over to Ryan here pretty, pretty soon. But if the EPA cleanup grant that we're pursuing on behalf of the city is awarded, and there is a shortfall in the MDC money for cleaning up the Western Marsh portion of the DUR area, that the EPA cleanup grant could be used to complete that cleanup in addition to addressing the Eastern Marsh. So that concludes the technical update regarding Water Street. Before Ryan takes over, I did want to offer council the opportunity to ask any questions that they may have.
Yeah, right. Questions for Scott. Oh, boy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's good to have information, but it's painful to hear this information.
Yeah.
For starters, can you talk, you've talked obviously a lot about remediation. You talked about removal of soil. Is, when we do talk about remediation, when we have levels that are at a, at a point where we have to remediate, is removal of the soil the only option, or is there any capping and sealing possible? What else can be done or will have to be done?
There are options besides excavation, transportation, site disposal. Obviously, the objective for Water Street is to get it to a place of viable marketability so that it can be redeveloped and put back on the tax roll, right? Under TASC, which regulates PCBs, the high occupancy cleanup standard is one less than or equal to one part per million. So if you wanted to use the roughly two-acre DUR storage yard for residential land use in the future, excavation, off-site transportation, and disposal is really the only feasible option in the short term. When you get away from high occupancy residential land use, there are other cleanup standards under TASC for lower occupancy uses, non-commercial uses, just vacant uses. Depending on the level of contamination, if the contamination's at 25 parts per million, you need a fence around the perimeter of the site to keep people out. If it's above 25, you need a cap, which could be six inches of concrete and a fence. There's also deed restrictions that come into play. So if you want to get that part of the site to a state of development, remediation is the way to go. Yes.
That's what I thought. But I was hoping you had a better answer. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sure.
I didn't know.
No, I was just commenting. Thanks for the presentation. I like the summation of this. I think, I think this is awesome. I just want to point out that, you know, this has been a long time coming and that, you know, the history of how many different sampling protocols have been implemented on the greater portion of this property is amazing. And we've finally gotten to the point where we have a detailed map for a good portion of it, and we can move forward with that. And so, you know, a lot of the stigma that is attached to Water Street was known and unknown. I like the fact that you've done the history and put these things together. I don't see that in any of the other reports that we've had. And so that is, that is awesome for people to see exactly why this is such a widespread contaminant. One question I had is like, you know, this, the, one of the early reports said that the Western and Eastern Marsh were backfilled after it was mined, and that that was a fairly low level of PCBs in there. So this finding seems to imply that there's more than just that fill, contaminated fill going on.
I am hard of hearing, and I apologize.
That's fine.
Is the marsh, your question was related to the concentrations of PCBs that have been identified?
Right. So earlier on, there was, you know, that, that portion of the property was, was more homogeneous and at lower concentrations, but now it seems like there's more to that than what we had thought before.
Yeah. I mean, the, the data that we just presented, I mean, it paints a clear picture of what happened, at least south of the DUR storage yard. That explains a lot in terms of why the concentrations of PCBs are higher there than they are in other parts of the marsh. Going back a few slides, that PCB removal area, the pink shaded area, that was pretty extensive. One good thing about the findings in the Western Marsh is that PCB removal area is essentially cut in half because everything outside of the heavily impacted area is pretty minimally impacted. That whole southern portion of the site, excluding the Eastern Marsh, was used as an unpaid parking lot back in the 60s. So it's likely that some of the PCBs that, you know, the isolated low-concentration hits that were detected to the west are just from vehicular trackout from people parking on top of the bad stuff. The Eastern Marsh, yes, I mean, the vast majority of the PCB concentrations are quite low, except for two out of those 784 soil samples, which were above 50 parts per million. It's hard to say if that pattern would be consistent across the Eastern Marsh. I suspect because the property was 40 different tax identification parcels before the city acquired it, perhaps the Eastern Marsh was landfilled first with material from offsite rather than from onsite. And maybe that's why we see such a sporadic distribution and such a wide range of concentrations. But it is, it's clear now that the DUR operations were actively using the pit in the marsh to dispose of debris.
So the proposed sampling would pretty much mirror what you did in the Western Marsh and be a grid of 10-foot spacing?
Not necessarily. It's something that we have not made any decisions on as far as a proposed scope of work. I think that approach may make sense along, there's a fence line that divides the Eastern Marsh and the Western Marsh. It may make sense there to make sure that DUR dumping didn't extend into the Eastern Marsh. And it may make sense around where we identified those hazardous pockets of PCBs. But there may be alternatives to drilling, you know, on a 10-foot by 10-foot grid and sampling 16 feet down to native soil. It is something that we would like to consult with EPA. You know, given the fact that there's 16 feet of fill material that's likely not suitable for construction from a geotechnical standpoint, there may be a way to just evaluate what's within, say, five feet of ground surface. And the cleanup that may be conducted with the EPA grant, if it's awarded, may just target the upper five feet. And TASC, under TASC, I understand from EPA that they're open to entertaining alternatives to paved caps. So there may be an opportunity in the Eastern Marsh to do a clay cap or something like that and convert it to park space without the need to excavate 16 feet down to get to, you know, a 10-foot by 10-foot by one-foot layer of heavy PCB impact. So that's kind of the direction that we're going there. Is what's a common sense approach for the Eastern Marsh, just given just the randomness of the results that we see there?
All right. The question I have written is, do you know what the groundwater depth is at that point?
In the Eastern Marsh, groundwater has been identified approximately 14 feet below grade, so it would be within the fill material that's been landfilled there. The cleanup activities that are proposed for the Western Marsh south of the DUR, those excavations may extend up to nine feet underground, and we expect water to collect in the excavations there. So when we release an RFQ, the bid specs will have a contingent, like a requirement for contingency or dewatering and containerization during cleanup activities.
And has there been any indication that, I mean, from the map that you've got here, that, that any of the PCBs of the lead have migrated from the DUR more extensively toward the river into groundwater?
I will say first that PCBs are very insoluble in water. In the Western Marsh south of the DUR, we did collect a groundwater sample a couple of years back because at that time, the MDC and HUD money, that hadn't been obtained yet. So we were preparing for much more limited remediation of what we knew was there at that time. So we collected that water sample to help prepare contractors for that contingency. We collected a filtered sample and an unfiltered sample. In an unfiltered sample, you typically have suspended sediment to which contaminants are absorbed. So running an unfiltered water sample can yield a false positive. It's there because it's attached to the sediment, but it's not dissolved in the water itself. In the filtered sample, on the other hand, we did not detect PCBs at all. So it's unlikely that PCBs are migrating through groundwater.
Can I ask one question before Councilmember Simmons? Kind of going on the lines of thinking about groundwater, but just in general, I know speaking very technically with these terms, and some of us who've been dealing with this for a while understand a lot of it. But can you just like speak for the public around, what does this mean for living things, living beings, like people on the space? And what is the expectation or requirement for that to be? I don't even know if it's safe. Okay. I don't know what the best language would be. Is it less than the one part per million?
One part per million, yes.
Okay. So anything above that is not suitable for humans, animals?
It is not suitable for a human to be living there under the assumptions that regulatory agencies use when they create cleanup criteria for residential land use. They assume that because it's residential, a human receptor could be there for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is not safe for that kind of use at this time.
And I just wanted to reiterate that because we've had so many conversations about this that I want to keep bringing that forward for folks to understand.
Yeah, and yes.
This is so important.
Really the ultimate goal of everything that we've been able to do over the past year and a half and what we hope to accomplish next year is to bring up at least two acres of the site where residential development is not dismissed out of Free up at least two acres of the site um where residential development is not dismissed out of hand because of what's in the ground.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I have a couple of basic questions too, but. Um, just off of what you just said in terms of thinking about the amount of space that might be freed up. With the cleanup process. So, um. I'm just trying, you know, and I'm like, oh, trying to see these like maps a little bit. And. So as it is now, is it that there's no up amount, because there hasn't been. There has been cleanup, but that the cleanup that has been done. So is there no amount of the space now? That would be usable for residential purposes?
Are you tagging the whole site or just?
Um, yeah, I'm just trying to get a, uh, because I might ask some questions, but like, yeah, so the site that we have now. How much of that, is there an amount of that that currently has been remediated enough for use?
Um, I, I can't answer that question objectively. Um, I can explain how this will go. When a developer comes in, um, a developer will do their own environmental due diligence and they will look at the historical uses of. The various portions of the site, you know, there's, there's. Hundreds of different land uses that have happened, forty different parcels over a hundred and twenty years. I think, you know, when I. This city retained C W A and us and we were kind of working together, like, how can we get Water Street to. A, a site or to a place of viable marketability? It's. Making developers aware of relative risk, I guess. Uh, there are areas that have been cleaned up. Does it mean? That those areas, you can build a house on it today? Not necessarily. A developer would have to come in and do their own. Due diligence and that's standard, standard practice. Um. The PCB and lead issue, I mean, that, that's not common. That's. An exception to what environmental consultants typically encounter dur- during due diligence. So what the overall objective with the city's cleanup approach is to get rid of the worst of the worst. So it, it. Reduces the overall. Perception of risk on the site. The D U R storage yard legacy contamination, that's. That is the kind of thing that would scare someone away. That's a very. Expensive problem to deal with, but um just because there's contamination in the ground doesn't elsewhere. Uh, or if those cleanup activities on other parts of the site didn't get everything because. There are thirty-five feet underground and the hole is collapsing. They can't dig anymore. That doesn't mean you can't do residential. It just means you might have to mitigate relevant exposure pathways. If you had like a chlorinated solvent in the groundwater or it's thirty feet in the ground and it's off gassing. Um, to have like an apartment building, you would put a vapor mitigation system in it to prevent those vapors from getting into the building. So it doesn't mean that. Uh, resident, residential development can't be done. Um, but like I said, I can't objectively say that. Uh, someone could come in and not have to do anything and build a house somewhere on the site.
Okay. And then, um, just a couple of things. So when you were talking about. Kind of doing the boring. So then you, are you trying to get down to determine? How deep is it? Like you're just going down until you don't find contamination?
Correct.
And so you can say like, okay, so at this part, you're like sixteen feet. At this one, it might be ten or whatever. So you just are kind of trying to. Face it.
Yes, so, um. I'll try not to take up too much more time, but in the D U R storage yard, uh, we knew that the impact was likely superficial, like on ground surface from spilling. So we investigated the upper five feet. We didn't go to sixteen feet. Um, we weren't looking for landfill material. It's, it's just at what depth does that PCB impact terminate? And it's typically between two and three feet. Um, it's different in the marsh because there's. You know, nine feet of fill material in the Western Marsh and sixteen in the Eastern. So there we did sample all that fill material every foot down until we got to native material um to see. If the PCB contamination cleaned up before native, um, and in some cases.
Um, and so just again, as we're clarifying, as we're thinking about this potential for more um. Cleanup. So to this point too, a lot of the focus has been on assessment. And it sounds like some of the funds that we have could, will be used for some remediation. Um, but that we're looking for more funds to do more assessment.
We are not seeking more funds for assessment at this time because the HUD grant that the city has already obtained is specific to assessment. So the, the remainder of the M E D C grant will be used for remediation. And the EPA cleanup grant that we're helping the city pursue, if that is awarded, that would be for cleanup.
Okay.
Not assessed.
And then that we, if we go, so going through that process. You kind of talked about this a bit, but so we then might be able to have. Full usage for residential, or there might be some places that still might be under that standard, one part per.
Uh, right, um. The objective for the D U R storage yard is to get to less than or equal to one part per million. I'm confident that we can get to that point. Um, north of the marsh, that is, with the M E D C uh funds. We may have a, a problem getting to that point in the, the marsh area, south of it. Uh, depending on, on how the costs break down.
Mm-hmm.
But the idea would be that if the EPA cleanup grant is awarded, it can be used for the Eastern Marsh and encroaching onto. The Western Marsh that the M E D C funds couldn't.
Mm-hmm.
For example.
And then the last question, because I think these other ones might move more into the next part of the presentation, but the other one I just wanted to ask is. Um, for one of the other developments we had that were, were um the, for the Dorsey Estates development, they were doing. Removal of soil to go somewhere else. And there were some different challenges in terms of. How long the soil had to wait before it could be transported and things like that. So. I'm just wondering, since that sounds like that might be a part of this as well, of moving soil?
Um, it shouldn't be.
Okay.
Um, I can't speak to the Dorsey Estates project. But what we are doing with Water Street is getting all the data that the landfill needs. Before we put any shovels in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so when we get to that point. There shouldn't be an issue with waiting other than perhaps.
Hmm.
The selected contractors uh ability to line up trucks. Which is a common problem, especially during busy construction season for everybody, really.
Great, thank you. Councilmember McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick last question. Is it too early for you to hazard a guess as to how long? All of this might take under a best case scenario? So. Assuming we were to get the EPA grant and assuming that we were able to obtain. Money for whatever remediation exists beyond the EPA grant?
We're asking how long this may take. Are you asking with respect to cleanup of the D U R legacy contamination or? Other?
All parts.
All parts.
And getting to a point where we can reasonably go to a developer or to developers and start to have conversations?
Um, I can't speak to the, go to the developer question. Um, that's the city. The D U R legacy contamination. Will be addressed next year because it has to be. The funds are up at the end of next year, so that will be done. Um. Beyond that, do you?
So we have planned, we, we do have plans to begin to do some community engagement and to start talking about. Um, engaging a developer with Carlisle Wirtman, starting in the beginning of the year next year, to start to do those community engagement sessions that we've talked about. With them, starting in the first quarter of next year. So leading into the excavation that will happen next spring with the D U R Storage Yard. So then what Ryan is about to start to talk to you about is that timeline of what the EPA grant would look like, which will coincide with the additional testing that we'll use. Or the HUD grant, that's the other, that, that is the other, the second grant that we'll get. That we'll do the testing and then we'll start to do the EPA grant, which would then lead to additional excavation. That will have, what would happen just following the spring twenty twenty-five. Excavation. Does that make sense? I, I know, I'm not, like, I don't have a timeline in front of me that I can show you exactly. So we would do community engagement starting in January. January, February, March of this next year. Start to engage with developers following that as, just as we're doing the excavation, right? Like, so then it would kind of all start to go like that. All in. If we get the grant, right? So it all, it would all work in a perfect order. And then we'll have a, we'll have a developer as soon as it's all cleaned up.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that as soon as it's all cleaned up, that's the, that's the date I'm trying to get at.
Definitely, yeah.
You know, the D U R area should be done by next year because we have to.
Right.
Be done. And then the rest, it depends on other funds.
Funding and, yep. Yes. Phases after that. Based on funding. Which will pretty much leads us to Ryan.
Right, I mean, hi, Ryan. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so I'm going to talk about the EPA grant that, um, we're working with the city that. Just going to give you some real basics on it, that the, the guidance on this thing is sixty-nine pages long. It's, it's insane. You don't expect that from the federal government. So there's no federal match that's required. You can request up to, um. There's no, the, the four million dollars we can get per project, which is the maximum we can get. Um, so the city doesn't have to kick in any kind of match or anything like that. So it's straight up four million dollars. Um, they are going to make about a hundred million dollars available nationwide and they're, they're estimating to get about sixty-three grants across the nation. So. Um, the city is eligible to apply as a local form of government. Uh, applications are due in two days. Um, we are working diligently to get that done. Um, my head is about to explode, but hey, we're, we're, we're almost there. We're getting it, we're getting it done. And then the winning applicants would be notified uh by late May. Um, you will get a, Katie would get an email uh basically stating that you've been awarded. So. Wait, that's the case that we have. I mean, I'm next year. So the focus, my graphics are not as. Cool as Scott's are. Big circle there is kind of roughly where the East Marsh is. Um, so we're looking at that area as, as kind of related to it as where we're going to uh target the funds for cleanup. PCB contaminated soil. Um, and there are other grant activities that are mandated as part of, we can't just kind of go in and just. Dig holes and start cleaning up stuff. There's a part, a lot of things that we have to do um as part of this grant. So, um. There's a lot of community involvement that's involved um with this. I'm alerting the public what we're intending to do with the money. Um, and where we're looking to do it, um, those kinds of things. And then also there's a lot of cleanup planning and work plan development they have to go with. So. Uh, Scott kind of alluded to, TOSCA is the, the federal authority on PCB cleanup. We have to make sure that all of our. You know, plans are compliant with that act. Um, and then of course, the meeting granted administration that goes along with grant itself. Um, so this is kind of like the pie chart of how the grants would kind of be expended is. And it really doesn't say a whole lot, but like the, the point is ninety-seven percent of, of the grant would go strictly to cleaning up uh PCB contaminated soil. So. Community involvement is uh, the part of the grant is, is, is public meetings. So we would have three meetings. One, we would, when we get the grant, we'd, we'd kick it off. We would uh present to you like, okay, this is what. This is what we're looking to do, that the process. Um, the next one we would have would be right before the contractor would be digging in the ground. Okay, this is what's happening. This is the contractor that is doing it. This is how we're going to keep you safe. This is when, when you could expect trucks, that kind of stuff like that. And then at the end, after everything is done, we would have another public community to kind of tell you what the grant outcomes were. So how much soil did we take off and where to go? I mean, where, where we at now? What did the, the? The new sampling data that we'd have to do. Um, uh, how did that, how did, what did, what are the outcomes? How we do? So. Uh, the planning uh process does take a little bit of time. I'll get to that in a second, but the, it's a, it has to be TOSCA approved, which is the federal. Um, oversight on that uh for PCB cleanup. It has to be compliant with other federal laws like Davis Bacon and, you know, the Endangered Species Act and all this. This Federal Historical Act, all that kind of stuff like that. So we have to make sure that we're. Um, we do our due diligence on that and then as well as preparing the specifications to uh obtain a contractor to do the work. Way we're kind of like, Scott's going to be working on um the assessment of the Eastern Marsh this, this fall and, or later this fall or winter. Um, we're going to use a lot of that data to kind of identify where the biggest, most contaminated parts of the site. First. Um, and then move our way around that is uh, our, from that, uh, those areas to try to get as much as we can possibly get. Um, and then so once that material comes out, we're going to backfill it with clean fill. Um, and then the grant administration, we have to do quarterly reporting. So every quarter, we have to up, you know, update EPA on our progress. How are we doing? Um, and just kind of show them that we're moving towards the cleanup itself. So this is a kind of a rough grant. It's kind of hard to read. Um, grant timeline um to, to your question, sir. Um, it's, it's a four-year grant. Love to be able to get it done for four years is up. Um, so I kind of alluded to, you'd be notified that, that we'd get the grant um in May of twenty twenty-five at the end of May twenty-five. So then at that point, um, EPA will contact the city and say, okay, you need to put together a grant work plan. So we just, we have to be more into the dollars and cents and those kinds of things. That is going to be due on, in June of twenty twenty-five, June fifteenth. And that's when we have to get the data that Scott had gotten over the winter. To show kind of exactly where we are going to target our uh cleanup approach. And then the grant agreement goes live on October first on twenty twenty-five. So that's the actual, they call it a cooperative agreement where the EPA. Signs an agreement with the city to use the grant funds. And so that big long line there, we kind of talked to you a little bit about the community engagement part, but like the big long line there is cleanup planning. Um, and it does take that long. So. I wish it was as simple as we put together a TOSCA approved work plan and we send it to TOSCA and they say, cool, stamp, here you go. It, it never works that way. Um, government is slow. So. It'll take us some time to put everything together and then we would send it over to, we would send it over to the TOSCA. They would review it. They always have comments and changes and things like that. So we respond to that. And usually it's kind of a ping pong kind of thing going there. And usually it takes about eight months to get a TOSCA approved work plan in place. And once that's done. Then we can get the plans and specs together to get a contractor on board to actually do the cleanup activities. And the cleanup activities actually. It's not that big part of the timeline. It's like, once you get shovels in the ground and trucks running, we can probably get it done, you know. Very short amount of time relative to the, the, the span of the grant, which is four years. And then we would close out the grant after all the cleanup activities have been done. So. That's kind of a rough timeline. We'd love to be able to get it, you know, done quicker. Um, and we, we possibly can. So if we were, if we're successful, so. That's pretty much all I have. Um, any questions about the grant process itself? I'm going to help it out.
About the grant? Oh, Councilmember Simmons, I'm sorry.
Yes, um. Hmm. So a couple of quick questions. One is just obviously like, I don't expect that you have a. What are those called? A glass ball? Uh, crystal ball. Thank you. I should get this together before I start. But, um. So, but just in terms of as you think about kind of the requirements um and what they're looking for in the grant. How would you see our competitiveness kind of stacking up in terms of that?
Pretty well, actually, and for two reasons. Um. EPA likes to be the last one to the table. They don't want to be the first funder in. And in your case, you have funding sources already procured with M E D C and the HUD, and the HUD funding. Um, so they would be one of the last people at the table and they, they like that. They, it's like, they don't want to just like, okay, I want to give you four million dollars and then what? You don't have enough? What's going on? You know?
Mm-hmm.
That really resonates really well with the reviewers. Um, the other part is if you kind of look at the city's demographics and it was kind of hinted at, you know, early, in early presentations. Um, this is a community of need. Um, the, the, um, the demographics, you know, uh, the, uh, the. Federal government right now has put a lot of emphasis on environmental justice issues. Um, and uh. You know, environmental justice and resilience and kind of alleviate those socioeconomic issues. Um, the numbers, there's just the raw numbers from the, the data shows that there is a environmental justice issue here um with lower income families as well as, um. You know, kind of a, you, you, lower incomes and, and racially um, uh, minority racial uh makeup here. So. Um, uh, minority racial, uh, makeup here. So it resonates really well in that regard. It kind of hits, um, the. Government's aim for realizing environmental justice. Those are two main things that really resonate really well with the grant guidance.
Cool. Yeah. Like the EPA wants to have a stamp and like it's done. Like they can claim a win. That's great. Um. The other question I have is a little bit more of a political question. Um, so just in terms of. In this fear and conversations, are folks, um, showing concern about potential for destabilization? Of the EPA and other regulatory bodies and how that will impact timeline and how things will move?
Can't really speak to that. Uh, I understand your concern though. Um, I will tell you that. The, this program, this entire EPA cleanup assessment grant program has been infused a lot with B I L dollars. The by part of infrastructure law dollars. Um, and we've seen a lot more like a hundred million that we're looking for just cleanup grants. It doesn't include, you know, multi-purpose grants that they're doing. Assessment grants and all of those grants, the ceiling of how much you can ask for has been raised significantly. It's the by part of an infrastructure law and that, I have to check. Well, I think we got a couple more years of that left. And I think that's. The way I kind of understand it, that's money that's already kind of been allocated and spent. It's not going anywhere. Policy ahead of, you know, after that, I'm not really entirely sure, but back, um, when we had a. Just, I'll just say when Trump took over, um, we had his first election, program didn't go away. Wasn't destabilized. It wasn't weakened or anything like that. It's always been there. This is a, um, this is a, a program that's generally very well regarded on both sides of the aisle in Congress. Um, because it gets a chance to, there's a lot of other different metrics that this touches, like. Job creation and environmental justice issues and all sides of the aisle kind of generally like. Things like this that will grow an economy and grow tax base. And that's why this is kind of, you know. Arisen proof, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Oh, I'm just wondering. I know you said it's six, five pages of guidance. How far into the application are we? I know we have two more days left. I think it was two.
Yes. So the grant, uh, narrative, if we're limited to ten pages, and I don't know how you can tell a story in ten pages, but we, we definitely could try. Um, that has been drafted and has been available for comment for the last two and a half weeks, uh, at the city's website. There's also another document. It's called an ABCA, which is short for, um, an analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives. So. We gotta kind of do this kind of analysis, like what happens if we don't do anything? Well, obviously nothing happens and no, nothing gained. The other one was, you know, okay, we dig everything out completely, you know, regardless of cost. How much is, and it's not really practical. We can't do that because it's like, I think we threw a number at, it was like twenty five, thirty million dollars to dig down to the sixteen feet that. We would, you know, we've detected PCBs. And then this approach, which was fits within the grant kind of stipulations as well as the targeted approach. Trying to get as much as we possibly can, uh, to get it with, to that one B P M that Scott was. Those documents have been available since the twenty fourth, um, of October on the city's website. Anybody can go in and kind of look at them, read them. Offer comment. I mean, Katie is still taking comments on that. Um, so after this meeting, um. What we will do is we will consolidate out of those comments. EPA wants to see them as part of the application. So all of your questions here today or any questions from the public will be kind of recorded. We will document them and then we will send them along in with. The application is part of the, part of the, uh.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments?
This has been an ongoing program, um, always looking at the downside, uh, having gone through a number of grant processes for cleanup. Um, if this doesn't get awarded this year, we can reapply next year.
Yes.
And I'm guessing that by then we'd have more information from the HUD grant to be able to supplement this and have a better chance at.
Yes. So if not awarded, there's a, there's, there's a hundred sixty five point rating system. There's, there's three different reviewers. One from our region, one from out of the EPA region, and then somebody from the Department of Management and Budgetment of the Feds. They all review it. And they all score each section of the grant in a certain way. And in years past, that cutoff is a hundred sixty two points out of a hundred sixty five points. It's super competitive. Um, I, I like our chances because of the, the, the things that we kind of talked about before. But in the event that we don't get it, one of the first things that EPA will offer is what they call a debrief. So Katie and her staff, uh, would call into the EPA grant review and they would sit down and they go through the grant application and say, hey, look, this is where you got dinged. This is where you were a little weaker. We needed a little bit more here. So when the next grant cycle comes around, we would sit down and we would strengthen those sections. All right, we'd be more clear here or add more data or, or, or address those weaknesses as best we can and then try again next year. So. We're hoping this year, though.
I like our chances for this year. Um, that's all I have.
Any, uh, city manager?
Um, if I could just make one comment and, um, that's to extend a, a thank you to Senator Irwin's office for the M E D C funds. You know, without that, we wouldn't be at this stage. So that's, uh, that's very key as well as the, the funding that Representative Dingle was able to get us through HUD.
Other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Scott. Presentation. Katie, anything else for us before? All right. That's a lot of information and we got a long way to go. So. All right. We are going to move into our first ordinance. House Member Sweet, do you have that?
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash two four two resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Now therefore be it resolved. The attached ordinance entitled Parks and Arts amending chapter eighty, sections one through seven be adopted upon first reading and I saw move.
The move by Councilmember Sweet, supported by Mayor Proton Wilcoxen. Hello.
Good evening, Council. Madam Mayor. Uh, you have before your resolution to update chapter eighty, uh, as a result of the merging of the Arts Commission. And the Parks and Recreation Commission, both of them had enabling ordinances. This is an attempt to merge those two ordinances. The now merged, uh, Parks and Arts, or Arts and Parks Commission, um, took. Quite a bit of time to thoughtfully take parts from each ordinance and merge them into a functional whole, which is before you tonight.
Um, are you all okay if I open the public hearing before we ask questions? All right. If there's any member of the audience who would like to speak to council on this topic, the amendment ordinance for Parks and Art. Ready on Zoom by chance?
Um, so, um, Amber Fellow still has her hand up. I'm not sure. Do you want to speak about this?
Parks and Arts?
Maybe not.
All right. Please close the public hearing.
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash two four three resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, that the public hearing to amend chapter eighty entitled Parks and Art be officially closed. And I saw move.
By Councilmember Sweet, supported by Mayor Proton Wilcoxen. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we're back. Council thoughts? I know you want to talk about your. Okay, Councilman McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. I circulated a somewhat lengthy, but I, but I would argue almost a technical amendment. Uh, to clarify how we define our terms, uh, of office for this. Uh, there's very little that is said in section eighty point five. Uh, the amended language simply says, member shall serve terms of three years, terms shall be staggered. Doesn't say exactly how it should be staggered. Um, it also says that the member shall serve terms. What my amendment, uh, tries to do is. Instead of talking about members serving three terms, make the terms themselves three years and then people step into those terms.
Functionally what we end up doing. So the, the terms were naturally staggered as the, the commission was formed. So people do have separate end dates. Uh, we tend to have terms start as a standardized, in a standardized month. I, one of my commissions is in May, the other of my commissions is in July.
July.
July for this one. And that just helps everything run a little bit more smoothly.
I, we have enough confusion around these issues of who's on, who's not on, how long have they served, when is their term expired? Um, this is simply an effort and maybe nothing more than that, uh, to. Maybe provide a model that would work for all, uh, commissions, um, where they all, all the terms start on January one. And if someone, uh, if someone gets appointed in the middle of July, they, they step into one of those terms. But their term will still end at the end, at December thirty first on a year.
Might I recommend not December, January, but rather in the middle of the, the year, that November, December, January tends to be a wee bit chaotic.
Yeah, the con, the concept would be the same, but yeah, the dates could really be almost anything.
Other feedback from council or feedback on this recommendation? Number Sweet?
Um, just put the commission terms currently, um, and from what I saw in this commission, it's, um, changed over the years and. Um, Bonnie's kind of aligned it with the city's fiscal year, which I think, um. Has played well and has been, um, just specific to this commission, easy, um, to recall and remember, but you know, the dates we can set. Whatever we want. Um, but I think having them, you know. Not be, be at a time that, one, we're going to remember and two, that, you know, people, um. Maybe not as a hectic time of the year. So depending on what that is, if it's July through June, if it's January through December. Yeah, but I agree with kind of the format and the process that has been laid out here.
I don't remember, maybe one more comment. It seems to me that one of the things we ought to strive for in all of our, our legislation, our resolutions, our ordinances. Is if all of us were gone, would somebody else be able to figure out what we had in mind? And if we just say staggered terms. That could mean any of a number of things, right? It could mean that they start on the day that they're appointed and go for three years. It could mean. Stagger them. However, yeah. So I, at this point, I haven't moved this, but I'm, I'm curious to see if, um. There's interest in it. Could certainly change all those Januaries to, to July ones and, and change the December thirty first to June thirtieth, for example. But that's.
Oh, yes. My only suggestion or request would be not to ask the clerk to pick who's going to go in which term when. Um, the, the last, uh, paragraph about, you know, assigning someone to one of three cycles who's already. On the board, um, I would suggest maybe we eliminate that paragraph.
Someone has to decide. Right. And I, and I don't, I don't care who it is.
I, I guess the way I'm looking at it is, um, so you kind of want to start all over with the commissioners and put them into, even though. The commissioners that are on the board have an expiration date. Currently. Right.
And what are those expiration dates? Exactly.
But we would have to do that anyway.
Yeah, you have to look, yeah, we'd have to look it up to fit them in the new one.
We do have, yeah.
Yeah, they're here. They're there.
They are not actually accurate on the website. We were having a lot of technical difficulties.
Oh, okay.
If I could make one comment, if council desires to alter the, the dates of expiration, all of those. Um, resolutions of approval would, would need to be redone and then their terms fixed and then a new oath of office taken.
Councilmember Kay? Oh, I guess my question is, what is the benefit in doing this?
Uniformity.
Okay.
If I could, Madam Mayor, uh, do I think to the city manager's point, uh, that paragraph underneath the terms. Where it says existing members of the commission wished to remain on the commission at this time, goes into effect, should be assigned by, in my case, the clerk. But it could be somebody else, um, to one of the three cycles listed in this section. So, um, this contemplates. Not taking anybody off of a commission.
They, all of the, um, board members do alternate in years when they were, um, appointed or when they expire. Um, we have some expiring, one expired in twenty four, um. One in twenty five, uh, two, three in twenty six, two in twenty seven. So.
So, uh, Senator Simmons?
Yes, um, yes, a couple of quick things. I think to this question. Um, I think uniformity is going to be difficult because it's not happening across each of the, um, commissions at the same time. Too. Um, so I think that that would cause a challenge in terms of. Trying to get everyone on like a, a same timeline. And then I think, um. The additional challenge, I mean, I, I'm just experiencing this within the Sustainability Commission as an example. Which is, you know, people can have their terms, but, um, we're seeing a lot of folks actually not completing their terms. Um, so I don't know that we need to be as concerned about when their term ends because a lot of terms are ending. Um, and then we need to have them filled. And I think bringing a new person on, um, you know. Being able to come on knowing it's three years, like that's probably easier to keep track of than. Oh, I'm actually just completing this term of somebody else and it's a year and a half and then I have to re-up again and things like that. So I think for, from the volunteer standpoint and for keeping track, it's probably just as easy to know. Um, that as people are coming on, that they're naturally staggered at this point. I think that when I think about the importance of setting up. Staggering, like when I've joined other kind of boards or something and they've wanted to stagger us. And they're like, okay, you have one year term, you have a two year term, you have a three year term. And then it rolls naturally from there. So I think the setup is when you really get the staggering effect, um, which it sounds like we have. And that the staggering is really just to make sure that everybody doesn't leave the board all at once, although we also have experienced that. Um, so, um, yeah, so anyhow, I just wanted to kind of bring up that point. On, on that piece. And then, um. The other thing I'm just looking at in terms of the powers of the commission. Um, I think these all look, um, pretty good. One, um, question I have, um, or thought maybe, um, I'm just wondering, I'm trying to think about where it might fit. But, um, just in terms of whether there's a space, um. For, uh. Thinking about, you know, so we just had a big like cleanup process or like a Luna Lake at Prospect Park as an example. And during that, you know, people were like, oh yeah, here's the help we got from the city, you know, all these different things. Um. And I just, it made me think about, yeah, like if it's really easy for people to do this, like what is that process? And like, how do people know where to go? Or like, could they go to, is it that they go to the commission and say, hey, we want to do something at this parker? So I'm just wondering about like ways, um, that the commission can help to support things like cleanups or different things at the different parks. And if there's a place where that kind of fits naturally already, which is what I was trying to look at.
Or?
Uh, with their adopted park guidelines, but then also if you go to citiesypsilanti.com slash volunteering, there is a bit of a starter page there. And we're working on ironing out some inner administrative detail to make that process easier as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Great. That would be the only other thing that I was like, would be fun for people to know.
Further discussion? City manager, sorry, you had your hand up.
No, no, Councilmember.
Um, my only, uh, well, two comments. One is in section eighty dash four composition. Um, there's eleven members with no more than two. Um, there's eleven members with no more than two non-residents. If this comes down to three people and says not less than three people and no more than eleven. And if it's three people and two of them are non-residents, I see that as a problem. So, um, we could add language to be, uh, can't be above a certain percentage. Fifty percent or forty percent, let's see, thirty percent. Thirty-seven point six percent. I would move to amend section eighty, number four, uh, composition. To include, uh, no more than two non-residents. And non-residents shall not make up more than twenty percent of the active members.
Second, you said, wait, what was the percentage you said?
Twenty percent. So if there's six people, you have two.
Yeah, thanks for doing that math for me.
All right, discussion on the amendment?
So if I understand correctly, if we were down to three members.
You can have one. Thirty-three percent.
Not more than twenty.
Let's stick with twenty.
So the, the non.
Down to three members.
Have to leave?
They'd have to leave.
Perhaps I could suggest that in no case may a non-residence hold a majority over residents or vice versa. Residents shall always have a majority over non. City attorney.
Limitations to, uh, non-residents holding positions in other corners of our ordinance structure. Particularly the problem, although there should be a similar method for but generally residency standards found by our courts.
Interesting. We have a, we have a motion on the floor. What, what Bonnie said or what Mayor Protem's motion is the twenty percent, no more than twenty percent, which one? Are they both reasonable or just the? Okay. Okay.
I'll take that amendment. You got the word?
But which one? Because you said two things, right?
Well, they're. Yeah, it's the end of, yeah. I would pre, let's state it in the affirmative, right? That's what we like to do.
Okay.
Do a triple negative and call it.
Every time you're removing your amendment from the table. Senator Simmons, you okay with that?
Yes.
Are we replacing it with something? Can someone replace it with what Bonnie?
Might I perhaps make a suggestion? And of course, the city attorney can, can help us out. Um, as this is the first reading of the ordinance, we can amend it for the second reading. And as the intent is substantially the same, and we're just wordsmithing, I don't believe that the second one would need another public hearing, Mr. I like that better. So I'm hearing there needs to be a little bit of wordsmithing in terms of composition. I lost track, I'm sorry, whether there was an amendment or discussion about adopting council member McLean's.
It hasn't been.
Hasn't been.
Didn't move it.
There was no motion for, for it. It was a suggestion. I think they're staggered if we stay staggering them. I think we should be okay for right now.
I, I haven't read the ordinance, but, um, it might not be a bad thing just to put the expiration date. You know, being like councilman McLean had suggested December thirty first, I would suggest July first.
We'll, we'll pick a date.
Yeah, can we, yeah, can you all?
City manager?
I could add just something. All of our boards and commissions has a uniform, uh, expiration date, um, specific to that board, board or commission. It doesn't have a, a standard one for all, uh, across the board, but each of them does have a specific date that they all expire on. Um, and when people are resign and then other people apply, often we'll do the new member to fill that slot that was previously filled to get to that turn to maintain the staggering.
I could speak to that as well. Um, that would definitely be the clerk's responsibility to keep track of all of that. And, um, to ensure that when someone leaves, uh, and there's a partial term, that it is the partial term that is filled. And I will endeavor to ensure that that is done correctly, move forward.
I wish you good luck.
Thanks.
You have a question?
No, I'm just thinking of the wordsmithing for eighty dash four. It's not that complicated.
Well, you know, we'll make the attorney do it.
All right. Is there further discussion on this first reading?
Just a comment. I, I find it interesting that, uh, that we allow the commissions to set their own bylaws. That has always seemed very strange to me in terms of uniformity, in terms of how they operate, things like that. That has always struck me as, as strange. That people come in and, and they can change the bylaws as they go. Ultimately, we have to approve them, but it just seems like, um, bylaws for a commission should be a standard, standard issue. That's just a comment.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Well, all these workstations we keep talking about, this might be one of them. Something. All right. If there are no further comments, Clerk Wijobis call the roll.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen forty-one passes on first.
Yep. Councilmember McLean, you have our public hearing. Yep.
You just opened the public hearing. That's just to close it.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm used to, okay. So, um, we, I'm going to open a public hearing to allow for public comment regarding the US EPA cleanup grant application that we just heard about in the presentation. Katie, do you have anything to add before we ask for participation? If there's anyone in the audience who would like to just come, please come. Hello again.
Mark Hergot, one eleven miles. So the only sense of urgency is whether or not AKT Peerless gets paid in the next two days or not. There's, there's no sense of urgency to this. There's no developer that's going to consider the Water Street property over a property in Ann Arbor or in the surrounding townships. Not for the next ten years at least, there, until there's a saturation point. We've got time. We can take our time and consider all of the options. Sure, AKT Peerless wants to get paid. Let's let them get paid. Vote for it. I don't care about that. But you don't have to worry about the federal executive being changed or the US EPA grant going away. Just relax. We voted on the Water Street millage, what, ten years ago? So that there was no need to be dire or urgent. AKT Peerless putting on, we've only got two days, you know, and that's, that's just their way of making sure that they get paid. Or at least hope to get paid. That's all you have to think about is just take your time and deliberations on the Water Street property, cause this isn't an Iowa baseball game. If you build it, they will not come, not until Ann Arbor's full up at least.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to just counsel on this topic? Anyone on Zoom? No, no, you're fine.
Dana Curtis, did you want to speak on this item?
EPA cleanup grant. Can you please close the public hearing?
Resolution two, four, four, that the public hearing to consider public comment for the US EPA cleanup grant be officially closed. I so move.
Or.
And move and support it. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I just want to name that I do think there's urgency, even though Mark has left. Um, because it's about the contamination, not about AKT or a development. We asked about humans not being able to even occupy the space, even to walk on it, um, for, for long amounts of time. So I, I, I don't want to misrepresent what is happening here. We care about the contamination and that is why we want this grant. So that we can clean it up.
Can I add to that, that the work has already been done? Well, that. I have the grant. So it was like two days is not, is not the issue and it's not, not a rush job. It's been under, under, uh, underway for two years.
Um, every time you have our next resolution. No, we, no, you don't. We don't have. All right. You do have our next one though. Two, twenty-four dash two, four, seven.
I, I lost.
Second pick.
Pardon? No, I got that, but what just happened with the? Nothing. Nevermind. Resolution number twenty, twenty-four dash two, four, seven. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that upon the recommendation of Andrew Holunga, the Ypsilanti city manager, as provided in section four point oh seven of the Ypsilanti city charter, the contract for legal services with Conlon, McKinney and Philbrick, PC, and of Randolph T Barker as city attorney and Alan J Philbrick, W Daniel Troika, Stephen K Postima and Marjorie M Dixon and John M Barr as assistant city attorneys. And Randolph T Barker as FOIA coordinator and Jennifer Merritt as deputy FOIA coordinator is hereby confirmed and ratified. Yet further resolved that the city of, city council of the city of Ypsilanti approved the contract for legal services and authorized the clerk and mayor to sign it on the city's behalf. An ISO move.
So I'm supported by Councilmember McLean. City manager?
Um, council, this is the contract, um, just solidifying, uh, the agreement between the law firm and the city to provide legal services. This was the bid selected, um, by, uh, on, on my recommendation, um, at a previous council meeting. And this would just clarify the, the agreement. And of course, um, Randy Barker is present to answer any questions about the contract or the services.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Discuss this, but I don't know if there's anything extra.
I guess I just have one quick question. Um, in the agreement on the first part, it does say in such persons as the city attorney may in the future seek. Because there's already so many people, what are the chances that we would need to seek to appoint more people?
There's always fluctuations in the office. You never know, someone's going to retire, someone's going to leave the firm. Uh, I do have, uh, somebody in the firm who will be, uh, one of the point persons for prosecutorial services. So I would need to theoretically have the council appoint her as an assistant for that purpose. Under the terms of the charter. So I would be coming forth sometime in January asking for that to be done. But certainly I wouldn't say, okay, now you're an assistant city attorney without having council approval of that person.
And then, um, uh, just a follow-up, just because you said it, do we have anybody that, uh, that is expecting to retire anytime soon?
I don't know.
To be facetious. Um, but you know, there, there are other people in the firm that could add in terms of their services to the city, uh, that I would need. Litigation purposes, not so much, but if it's someone that's going to appear in court on behalf of the city, uh, in a prosecutorial setting or as the council setting, that's, that's really me. But I do have assist, uh, associates or other colleagues in the office that potentially would need to add. Pajami is one of those individuals that I would need to see. An age. Also potentially filling. And that's just to make sure that there's, there's overlap in that in terms of filling or anything of that nature. But if someone takes a vacation, someone can cover that and be competent to do so. That's, that's the benefit of having a larger firm.
Thanks. Just a note to, um, use the microphone. Folks often can't hear on the recording. It's a, it's a practice. Cause I know you're, you sound like a soft talker, so.
I've done a, on a baseball field when I'm coaching kids.
Okay. Well, you can just pretend like you're coaching.
What's funny is I was watching to see if it was picking up his words on the screen. I'm like, okay, you're, you're fine, but we, please do, speak into the mic.
I will.
Thank you. Further comment or questions about this contract? All right. Seeing none, Clerk Wijobis call the roll.
Councilmember, sorry, two things now here. Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So much. Councilmember Simmons, you have two for eight.
We were just realizing, so just a question, maybe this end of the table, did we actually vote? Or on, uh, resolution A?
There's no vote. It was a public hearing just to what people.
Oh, we don't have to actually do a vote.
We just closed, we voted to close the public hearing and.
You don't have to direct eighty-two. Do a job.
Okay.
We just look.
That. Oh, that's what we, yeah, okay. We were just like, okay, we just.
We're saying.
That's why I was confused. We had a public hearing and you know.
Yeah. So then we were all confused. Okay. All right. Great. And then, all right, here we go back on track. This one, two, four, eight, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes the importance of a warming center during the cold, harsh winter months in Michigan and seeks to assist our most vulnerable. And whereas the city operates the Ypsil- Ypsilanti freight house and generates revenue to help support the ongoing maintenance and community purpose of the space. And whereas the investment in a warming center at the freight house is part of a broader strategy to prioritize community health collaboration with community partners like the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti city council approved the memorandum of understanding with the Shelter, Shelter Association of Washtenaw County to support the warming center operation beginning in November twenty twenty-four and ending in March twenty twenty-five, subject to city attorney approval. An ISO move.
Uh, move by confirmation for the councilmember King. KT. Hello again. Oh, hi.
I did ask, I did ask him to come up.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so you have it before you and, um, we have been working with the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County as, um, for the, ever since last year, basically. We didn't, we never went out of conversations. Um, and we've been working with the county as well to just, um, work on housing as well as shelter, um, year round, really. We've been working with, with those groups to, to come up with the options and, and look for shelter options for the county. Um, and so if you guys have any questions for us, um, regarding the proposal, um, happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'm answer questions from council.
Yes, thank you. So I have a couple of questions for y'all. Um, one I noticed in here, so, um, well, I guess this is for the others, the one coming up. It's like, this is the one thing with these like connected ones.
A little complicated and both of them are.
Yeah. Well, um, I don't remember. So I'll ask this one anyway. Uh, I remember last year that there were different issues with staffing throughout the time. Um, and so I'm just wondering kind of what lessons are learned and communication tools for the people who might be looking for service when there were close there, closures and things like that.
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, thanks for having me, council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to partner again. Uh, Dan Kelly with the Shelter Association. I know a lot of folks here, but, um, yeah, that's a great question. We did have some staffing issues last year. This year we started hiring for winter, uh, in August. Uh, I have been doing training and we actually have a, like a newer. Uh, I have been doing training and we actually have a, like a newer training model where we have folks. Who were there last year actually training. In fact, St. Luke's is going on right now. So right down the street, there's overnight sheltering at St. Luke's, um, and, uh, we, we worked something out with St. Luke's in advance. Uh, to start that earlier and, uh, because needs really high and, uh, that's been working so far. I was just over there before that and. Plan on going after this and, uh, that's our main thing. Um. Obviously, as Katie mentioned, long-term, you know, for thinking big picture, this is a Band-Aid on a much, much larger problem, as we all know. Um, we'd love to get out of the seasonal model, having to ramp up. Because it is challenging, presents challenges, but we're, you know, we're, we're paying a, a fair living wage and making sure staff members are supported and have. Uh, benefits, uh, that go with those efforts and feel like they're on a team and a, a part of a group that's really doing some really good things across the community. And then the big thing, the big change was hiring really early and then surrounding folks with more training, uh, upfront, so.
One of the things that, um, that we've also done is, is improved the communication between the city and the Shelter Association. And so Dan and I have. Worked really hard on making sure that the, the city and, um, their staff are having meetings. At least our communication between the two organizations is working really well, so that, like, when we do know that there's staffing issues. Or we do know that there needs to be a closure, that we have plans and that we're communicating and so that like. That we can get out on social media, we can get the communication out, so that there's at least some communication internally between ourselves. So that then we have plans in place and that that communication goes out and that there's notices posted and things like that, so that. There's information that goes out.
Great.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from council?
Just in terms of the MOU itself, the, the language, starting in number twenty, um, there's some grammatical. Things that I can, I can send to you to, to, um. To correct, um, the question, uh, in twenty-one, uh, there's a section where it says, a city at its option shall be listed as an additional named insured on the following insurance coverages. Provided by SAWC and then there's yes and no boxes and nothing is checked.
Get one checked.
Clarification on that, and it's about comprehensive general liability and automobile liability, so, uh, just wanted to. Take that away.
I think we have both, actually.
Yeah, I figured it was a yes, but I would just.
Usually get them checked when they're signed.
That's all I had.
Further from council? Oh, city manager?
If I could just add, uh, one thing, um, through conversations with the Shelter Association and then our county po- partners, we realize that the. The freight house is not the answer, it's just getting us through to a point that we can have. A facility on the eastern side of the county, um, and but we need to do that through partnerships with, of course, the county Shelter Association. Um, surrounding jurisdictions, hopefully, um, but. Yeah, we, we just want to name that, we, we realize our goal and how do we get there?
Thank you. You for naming that, we've been having a lot of discussion about that, so. And, and Dan and I have been very open about that conversation and, and continuing to brainstorm. Those options and continuing to introduce one another's partners and, and having lots of those conversations at, throughout, again, throughout the entire year and. Bringing folks to the table and continuing to try and find options. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue with our, um, continuum of care, which is our local coordinator, anybody across the county. Being discussed, in fact, some folks from our leadership in our community of care just met with Kalamazoo County. Uh, if anybody saw, there was some stuff in the New York Times earlier in the summer, because they had a lot of increase and need a massive increase. And their, their county and multiple cities came together and their COC, they actually are building a, a five point two million dollar. A former hotel family shelter, uh, in Kalamazoo County right now. We just met with them, kind of learned best practices and. Figure out how they did it and, uh, it was just a lot of communication, uh, and then turning over every rock and really, really making it the priority and. It took time, obviously, it took a while. They just kept at it, so we're talking to other communities.
How cool if we could partner and do this together, right? Collaboration and partnership.
Collaboration and partnership.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember McLean.
Thank you, mayor. One quick question, a little bit tangential, but you had mentioned, uh, St. Luke's, how many spaces do they have available and what do those. Spaces look like?
Yep, yeah, overnight about twenty-five to thirty. Uh, last year, we would hit, uh, twenty to twenty-five people at night on average. Right now, it's lower, the weather's not quite cold yet, also folks are, you know, getting used to the, the shelter being available and a lot of folks. Center over in Ann Arbor, but, um, about twenty-five and a half.
I appreciate maybe other council members would too, as we go through the season, based of, of the utilization there.
Anything further from council or?
I have to look at you, because.
Nope, I'm good.
Missing you on the side.
Okay.
Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yep.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes the importance of an overnight warming shelter. During the cold harsh winter months in Michigan and seeks to assist our most vulnerable and whereas the city. City operates the Ypsilanti freight house and generates revenue to help support the ongoing maintenance. And community's purpose of the space and whereas the investment in a warming center at the freight house is part of a broader strategy. To prioritize community health collaboration with community partners like Shelter Association of Washtenaw County. And where St. Luke's Church has offered to host an overnight warming shelter at one twenty North Huron Street. And the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County will provide operational support as detailed in the following memorandum. Of understanding, now therefore be resolved that the Ypsilanti city council approved the MOU with the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County. And the city of Ypsilanti and St. Luke's Church to jointly operate overnight warming shelter at one twenty North Huron. Beginning in November twenty twenty-four and ending by March twenty twenty-five and au-. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city, subject to city attorney's approval, ISO move.
King, supported by Councilmember McLean. What else you got for us? And the one for the overnight shelter, um, you know, we've been, again, we've been working with, um, St. Luke's as well as. Over Association, um, maybe not quite as long as St. Luke's, but certainly the Shelter Association, uh, for the overnight shelter. Um, new this year, obviously not in this MOU, but, um, we will be able to, um, add on. Saturday night, Saturday night and Sunday night this year with, um, a partnership with Second Baptist and with, um, United Methodist. United Methodist will be in November, adding Sunday nights and then starting in December, we'll have Second Baptist adding Saturday and Sunday nights. So for the first time this year, we'll have seven nights a week. Addition for this year. That's about a little bit of hours for the last two years. Alright, comments or questions on this? Uh, Councilmember Simmons.
Yes, thank you. So, um, one of the questions I have is whether we're going to be doing MLUs for each of the congregations. Or is it just this one, because it's the major partner?
But it's a little bit, it's a little bit complicated, because the MOU is actua- so the MOU with the city are on our. Our contract is with the Shelter Association. The Shelter Association's contract is actually with St. Luke's. If that makes sense. It's all, it's all laid out that way, but like, but that's how it works. Um, so no, we don't have any other. Under, understanding through the churches, that's strictly through the Shelter Association. City manager?
If I, if I could add on to that, w- we think that moving forward for the other overnight, uh, shelters that are needed until a more permanent solution is. Found, more than likely, instead of doing an MOU with St. Luke's, we'll just, we'll. Provide a, a resolution of funding for, um, Washtenaw Shelter Association, uh, operations.
I think it'll be, it, moving forward, like, starting next year, it'll just be easier for us to have just an understanding with our. And then based on who that, who's doing whatever for the other parts, it'll be easier for them to have those understandings, just so that it doesn't.
They're like subcontracting.
Right, just because I think otherwise it starts to get, it get, like, i- in fact, even this year with this unders- like, with this one. I got an email th- this morning that was like, oh, you got, you, you guys forgot to add this, and I was like. Yup. That happened, right? And so like, they have to do another addendum to their agreement, because there was pieces that, that, that I just.
Yeah.
Don't know about or are missing because of pieces that they're, they have in their agreements and things like that, so. That'll just keep it neater and, and a little bit easier for the city to manage.
And then the other question, and this is just, um, so when I was reading between these two, both of them said something about like up to fifty thousand dollars. And I was just like, is it just same fifty thousand dollars? Or is this?
It is not the same fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah. So overall, then it's a hundred thousand dollars.
City manager?
So we put, we changed the verbiage to up to fifty thousand dollars, because there's potential for, um, outside funding. Um, but if we're unable to receive that additional funding, we want to make sure that we're still funded at the whole hundred thousand.
Yeah, and just to add to that, um, and if anybody's on the call listening, just, last year, we had a lot of fundraising, we were able to raise additional funds, so. That's what we're hoping to be able to do again this year across the county and. That's why I really love these public private partnerships, because we can do, uh, fundraising for the winter programs, we got a really caring community across the county. That's our hope is to be able to, but, and that's through, uh, we've actually got a, a breakfast event next week, we're hoping to reach a few thousand dollars at that. Um, it's homeless awareness week, starting next week.
Oh.
Um, so we got a whole slew of events coming up, uh, we actually just had a health and wellness fair yesterday. But, um, that's why the up to numbers are in there is, uh, going back to the note about kind of the contracting relationship, that would mirror how we do it with the county as well. Another thing that's really confusing is, is we have a rotating shelter model, this just shows there's so much need. Uh, and that's like twenty-two congregations, so to mention all that makes it there, would get really, really confusing, so usually it's just easiest to set it up.
Thank you. Uh, any additional questions or comments from council or staff? I had the email with Dan several times when I was writing the RFL, just to like, explain to you guys, like, who was doing what on what nights and what days, because I, I was like. Wait, who's doing what?
Yeah.
It got real confusing. Thank you, okay. Clark Wijl, please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, awesome. Um, alright, Councilmember Simmons, you have our next MOU.
Uh, two five zero, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas Growing Hope has been operating a farmer's market in the Freight House Plaza since two thousand thirteen. And whereas the, in the April of twenty twenty-one, Growing Hope entered a memo- a memorandum of understanding for operations at the Freight House Plaza. And whereas due to the projected construction of the Freight House Plaza, Growing Hope is interested in relocating. Its operations to their property at sixteen South Washington. And whereas as part of the addendum, memor- memorandum of understanding, Growing Hope requests that South Washington between Michigan Ave and Ferris. Be closed and all fees be waived. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti enter the attached addendum. To the twenty twenty-one memorandum of understanding with Growing Hope to use the South Washington Street. For Saturday Farmer's Market and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on the city's behalf. Per review by city, by the city attorney and ISO move.
Support by Councilmember Simmons, supported by Councilmember King.
Um, council, some years ago, uh, Growing Hope did provide a Tuesday Farmer's Market, this would. Operate similarly to that, um, Julius Buzzer, the director of Growing Hope is here, uh, to field any question if council may have them.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments from council?
Uh, I think this is great, we're looking to redo the plaza and there's really no place to have the farmer's market and these folks have been doing an excellent job of. Hosting and arranging that for, for a number of years, so I think this is just this kind of, um. Common sense extension, I guess.
Um, I think this is great as well, um, the only comment I'll give is, I guess, more of a suggestion, um, and is that, and. Probably something we should consider for any kind of street festivals going forward or things in the street is to have, um. As we've seen issues with things nationally, um, and to avoid local issues. Um, to consider adding some sort of stronger barricade system, either a temporary vehicle, um, parked at the intersection to block off instead of just the. Generic barricades that people can drive through, at least during the market hour, so there's a more stable, um. Barricade to prevent any, um, injuries or unwanted things happening. And again, not just for this, but anything, um, that we do with road closures, um, I would highly encourage that as well for safety reasons.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
I'm excited to have the market coming to Ward one.
Any additional comments or questions? You stood up for no reason, we're all good. Alright, Clark Wijl, please call the roll.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Member King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council, a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two five one, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the operation of the Department of Works is an ongoing and important service offered to the residents in the city of Ypsilanti. And whereas the city council of the city of Ypsilanti has allocated funds in the past budgets for these purchases, whereas the purchase price of. The vehicle is more than the originally budgeted amount, whereas the remainder of the purchase price can be drawn from current year motor pool capital. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Ypsilanti approves the purchase and the amount of five, five hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-eight. To be expended from the appropriate motor pool capitals account, with any change orders to be approved by the city manager, ISO move.
Support.
Before we get started, I think that the numbers might be off.
Yep.
Okay, so this is two five two in our packet. Anyway. No, no, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure. Two, two five one is the fee schedule, two five two is what we're talking about now. It's okay, I just want to make, I was like, wait a minute, so, um, I was well, we'll just, I'll just fix the numbers, it's fine, we'll just fix the numbers.
What takes precedent? Number on the document or the number on?
What she read and we'll fix the number.
Okay, gotcha.
Alright, so Director Wester. Yes.
Um, we have a couple of small fee schedule updates and changes, we realize.
We're on.
We're on the.
We're on your vehicles, the vehicles.
Around vehicles.
Yep. Yes.
They're all trucks that would replace existing trucks, nothing new. Um, we've gotten competitive price quotes for each of them, we've used standardized pricing in my deal. One of them was recently in a crash, as we expect actually to be totaled out. Some, the rest of them are standardized replacements.
Questions for Bonnie?
Which one do you get?
Um, actually, what, the director, um, vehicle is on this list.
Oh.
So, uh, vehicle number one oh two. Small pickup type is currently a twenty twelve, uh, Ford Escape. It is absolutely end of life, um. It, uh, threw under code when I was on my way to a meeting over in Ann Arbor the other day and I had to turn around and come back. Um, currently, though, we've realized that the escape is not a particularly practical vehicle for DPS, because it doesn't have a bed that you can just chuck stuff into. It's a little bit hard to chuck a traffic cone or a shovel or even some supports for signs into the back of an escape, you've got to fold down seats and then things get dirty and it's a mess. So we're looking at replacing it with a, a Maverick, a hybrid Maverick, actually, so. One of the things that you may see before you in the coming month is an update to our al- alternative fuel policy. Which is currently under consideration by the, uh, Sustainability Commission. Our last alternative fuel policy was adopted in two thousand eleven, it is absolutely showing stage. Uh, so it was time to update that to acknowledge that electric vehicles are currently a thing. We're never going to get a propane boost for our heavy trucks and probably the next thing we'll see in the development of heavy trucks is going to be a hydrogen fuel cell, but that's a couple of years down the road. So, well, anyway, back to this RFL. Any questions?
The pricing for one oh two is, sorry. Uh, to continue, the pricing for, for one oh two is for that hybrid. Wow, that's a nice price.
It is a nice price.
That's pretty cool.
And what year would these be now? Because you have the year per. Cause you have the year purchased, but what would be the?
It would be purchased this year.
So then they would be two thousand twenty fours.
Not every model year, but I believe most of them are model year twenty fours.
I don't know if this applies, but I know there was a big delay when we uh procured new recycling and yard waste vehicles. Is there the ones that you're looking at now, pretty much more so, I guess, in stock um and easier to get quicker?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's great. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm curious about the laser guided snow plow.
So this is a fun one. Uh, so currently all of our plow trucks have an underbody plow. And what we do on the trunk lines is we usually have two or three trucks in sequence, one after the other. Pushing the snow out of the way. In order to save time and energy and what have you, they have something called a wing blade, which is really cool. You lower it, it sticks out the side and pull it along. Since it is a brand new thing for our crew and technologies has advanced, you can actually get a laser on the edge of that plow. So as you go along, you can see where that, the edge of that plow is going to be. So it reduces the chance of working into something that you do not want to run into.
Additional questions? All right, seeing none, please follow the role.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown. Motion carries.
We have a motion to extend, please.
Is it that time already?
A motion to extend until midnight?
What girl?
I mean, there's some time.
I, I, I support.
But we, we don't, we're not staying here till then.
No, but we don't have to do this in twenty minutes, right?
Oh, it's originally ten, not eleven.
Okay.
All right, uh, Congress, you have the fee schedule resolution.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash two five two. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, now therefore be it resolved that the fee schedule will be updated with the following entries. Right of way permit, reinspection each after the first reinspection, fifty dollars, right of way permit, alley closure, one thousand dollars per week. Right of way permit sidewalk repair or replacement, fifty dollars for the first fifty feet and an additional fifty dollars per increment of fifty feet thereafter. And recycling carts each for twenty-five dollars and I so move.
Sweet, supported by Mayor Pro Tem. Again, Bonnie.
Hello, council. Long time no see. Um, as I was about to say before, have you caught me? Thank you very much. Uh, we realized that we did not actually have a fee listed for alley closures in the commercial district um that was proposed here. Uh, we have also been monitoring some of our um you know, as we, as you know, we updated our fee schedule significantly. Uh, I think it was about two years ago. We've been monitoring how that's working out. We realized that we have a significant number of reinspections, particularly for sidewalks. That's what the reinspection fee is in relation to. It also helps keep um some of our pavement repairs uh proceeding. Um, and some sidewalk replacements, of course, are more complicated than others, and that's why the length performance is in there as well. So. Any questions? Oh, did I leave one off?
Recycling bins?
We have a lot of them. Uh, the price had initially been set at cost. There wasn't a lot of demand. We would like to have less of them. Um, so lowering the cost.
What's involved in a right of way permit? Is that for digging between the road and the, and the sidewalk and that pertains to communication companies, all those kinds of things? Or are there something missing?
So anything that you are doing in the right of way could be requi- could require a right of way permit. So when you are digging in the roadway itself, the asphalted service surface, that is a right of way permit and that also requires a bond. Um, when you are replacing a sidewalk, we made that a much cheaper permit because it's a relatively straightforward process. It's something that a homeowner could be doing as well as a contractor or a commercial establishment. So we tried to make that a little bit more accessible. Um, but with the roadway permits and particularly we, we do want to ensure that there is a a high standard that we're holding people to.
Seeing none, please follow the role.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, um, we are moving into a series of discussions. I would like to preface this by saying if we could be mindful, I actually don't want to be here till midnight if I'm being honest with you. So we could just, you know, move through these expeditions. I would appreciate it. So the first is regarding conflict resolution and commitment to conflict resolution. Um, with the council member, members who place the agenda like to kick us off.
Sure. So I put all of these uh discussions on. Um, so this first one is regarding an email I sent. Um, just one naming that we obviously have conflict, not only between council and community, but also among council members. Um, and I experienced that very clearly during our last meeting. And so wanting to kind of bring something, some things forward so that we can actually think about how we move through. Um, name conflict and move through it um in a, a better way. And then how um it could help us to better serve the community. And um, and kind of move through what um might feel like sectarian um conflicts that actually cut through our ability to hear each other and to take those things into account within the votes and the things that we're doing. So I just wanted to bring it forward. I think that we've talked about during um retreats and things like that. And so there's things that this can fit into this. I know I shared a resource um which is a workbook called Turning Toward Each Other as one start um that we could use so that we can kind of move through a process amongst ourselves. Um. And I think that's pretty much all I have to say as a starting point.
Any discussion from council?
I would say I definitely think we could, as a team, benefit from conflict resolution and team building and I though, no, this is something that has been brought up in the past. And I definitely want us to take more of an effort to take it seriously so we can build as a team.
Any comments from council? Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, I'm having missed the last meeting. Um, I'm aware of some uh turmoil, but was not um, and I have to say I haven't gone back and watched it. But this has been brought up even before that um in terms of uh having a, having a retreat to do better team building and then uh any resources that would be helpful in terms of uh bridging gaps uh would be appreciated.
I will just say that some of the things that I'm talking about aren't going to be ne- necessarily captured in the video. It was things that were happening outside of the public meeting. So.
City manager?
I was gonna say this in my, my comments, but we are beginning to examine what a retreat would look like. It's um, if it would be subject to OMA. Um, but we are in the process of trying to figure that out. So once the new council is seated, um, we can begin that process.
Thank you. Actually, that's kind of what I was gonna talk about. Any further discussion, comments? Well, what I also add, I, I mean, I do think that we talk about being a team and in order for us to, to lead community, we have to model the behavior. And so um I'm supportive of figuring out how do we do some resolutions, some repair. Um, and I'll, you know, wait to hear feedback from city manager around what a retreat that would actually be beneficial to us as a group would look like um in terms of being able to have real discussion, have vulnerability present. I know that that can be hard if it's an open meeting with the public part of it, depending on what we're talking about, right? And that's just the reality. Cause we are humans first. Um, but yes, I look forward to what will come from this.
I guess I just have a question about uh timing in terms of uh, you know, we are, we are about to start out on our goal setting that we can go into um budgeting and the, those uh, to me, those those, that process in the last couple of years has not been very beneficial. And I don't, um, I'm wondering how we can incorporate both of these things at the same time because we're trying to come together to come together to um you know, define the priorities and the goals for, for council. Um, how this process can be, uh, that process can be augmented with, with uh some other facilitation so that we can um have a better set of goals.
That would definitely be subject to OMA.
Well, goal set, like if it was incorporated with goal setting, but
Yes.
I guess what I was thinking was, could this be something, I know we don't have a ton of time that could happen, the retreat before that so that we can be prepared to go into those, those meetings. Yeah, separate but complimentary so that it impacts the outcome of those things.
Yeah, so that would kind of have to, so then thinking about the turnaround for that, you know, we're looking cause we start goal setting in January. And so we would be wanting to think about dates then probably in December. So this might be something, do we think we might have more information about the restrictions by our next meeting?
I thought uh January was actually late for goal setting that we previously started at the end of the year. December to, to map that out.
It's been started uh both in December as well as uh January, but if we're planning on doing a retreat, more than likely we have it in January. Um, staff has already begun. Um, we actually had our first meeting this uh Monday. Create a strategic plan on where we, staff at least thinks uh where our goals are. So rather than coming at it from a place of, you know, uh segmented, we, by department, we're going to be submitting to council uh a completed report with, with our strategic plan for the coming fiscal year and then beyond as well.
Thank you. Further discussion? If all minds are clear on this topic for right now, um, we'll move into the discussion regarding the city council organizational meeting.
Yeah, so um, this is just trying to see if we can find another date because I'm not available on the eighteenth. That's it. That's all. That's the only thing. I want to find another date. Looking at the um charter, it doesn't say that we have to do it then, so. I just want us to find another date.
Can we get feedback from staff?
My understanding is that it has to be before um the next council meeting so that we can seat the council members. So we have a small window.
So the organizational meeting has just been a part that during the, the meeting, we seat the new council and that's per charter. It has to be done by seven thirty uh following the election. The certification of the election is when it concludes. So that was today. So we'd have to have that happen on the eighteenth. I don't believe, there's nothing in the charter that says the organizational meeting has to happen on that same day. Um, I'm not even sure that there needs to be a meeting where the oath of office is. Um, but that's just from my interpretation of the charter. So just historically, that is how we did it. Our council did it.
So technically, if, if we don't do the organizational meeting on the eighteenth, we would either one be coming here just to seat new folks and leave and or we would just not have a meeting.
I'm not entirely sure of the, the legal requirements to have the oath of office happen in an open meeting, so I would defer to the, the city attorney on that.
My, my belief is that it doesn't have to happen in an open meeting unless there's something in our charter that would dictate that.
Which it doesn't say. Yeah, that's, I just will say it didn't pick you up that time.
I, I just seem to recall that, that um in previous years, uh, the organizational meeting was part of a regular council meeting. I, I think we may have done it as a, a six o'clock session for a seven o'clock meeting or something like that as well.
It, it depends. It's, it's never, it's always been an organizational meeting. However, if there's something pressing, that would be put on the beginning of the organizational meeting prior to the new council being sat. The new council will be then sat and then they would, uh, council would uh approve the rules for the, the, the coming two years.
It's never been an actual council meeting. We just added things that were pressing to that agenda.
Ah, gotcha.
I guess I don't really know how to answer this. We, I, I, I don't know.
Thoughts?
I don't. However, this might factor in, but I, knowing this was on the agenda, I looked at my own calendar and you know, other than the eighteenth, the next time I can be here for anything other than our council meeting that's scheduled is Monday ever Thanksgiving.
It's in December.
Whenever that is. Number second.
That would be December second.
The next day is a council meeting.
The third, right?
The third.
We also have one on the twenty-sixth, right?
The Tuesday before Thanksgiving and the Tuesday after.
That's not okay.
I will also add that the council will need to approve its rules before it starts saying you have business.
Work. Yeah.
So if council would like to alter the date, it would have to happen either on the twenty-sixth or prior to.
What does our, the, our agenda look like for the twenty-sixth so far without things that are being added?
And we have the second reading in minutes. I don't think we have anything else listed as of yet.
We don't, we do we think anything's coming from department heads?
I'm sure things are coming from departments, but I, of, what that is, I, I don't have an idea yet.
Yeah, and I know I'll be um looking to add a presentation from CBS about the outcomes from their pilot um to be at that meeting. And then, I mean, so the conversation is whether we can add this part to the twenty-sixth? Is that what you're considering?
Well, I mean, I, that's the original question that I asked around. Do we need to be here for oath of office? You're saying you don't think so. Attorney Barker is uncertain if that's the truth. I, I just need to understand because we need to know before we leave here. What's, what's happening on the eighteenth? Do we, are we coming for a meeting? Are we canceling a meeting? Um, not if we can add business. I mean, we add business all the time, but what are we doing on the eighteenth? Are we doing nothing? Are we doing something?
Well, I mean, we have an organizational meeting scheduled um where we would swear everyone in and um then go over the rules and approve the rules so you can then conduct business. I, in theory, if you wanted to do it, you know, at the beginning of your November twenty-sixth meeting, we could do that.
I definitely, I, I would support moving it to November the twenty-sixth.
Councilmember McLean?
How long, for those who have been here before, how long does the rules process go?
All night.
It depends. There's a, there's a lot of things around like approving Robert's rule, approving this, approving that. Um, we have to reassign like boards and commissions and not, you know, once the person, people are seated, we typically would do that. Um, we have to reassign like boards and commissions and not, you know, once the person, people are seated, we typically would do that all. There, so it, it's not necessarily quick, but it doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna be long. I mean, it just depends.
Hour, hour and a half.
Maybe more than that, but I mean, it just, it really depend. I never know anymore about our agendas if it's gonna be long. I thought this one will be short. And we're still here, so I don't, I don't know. I mean, I would go with the will of council. I would, I would prefer to keep it on the eighteenth, um, but I would go with the, the body on, on this.
I would just say I definitely support moving it because I definitely want us all to be able to be there. And I know Councilmember Simmons did state at the last minute she was not available. Because we, you know, she was not available on that Monday and we did add this meeting. It's not like it was a meeting that was already. On our schedule because of the new procedures this year, correct?
The, I, I don't know how the, the organizational meeting was missed when the, the schedule was approved. Um, last December, but yeah, typically an organizational meeting would be approved with the, the calendar of schedules. Or schedules of meetings, sorry.
I have a question about oath of office as a returning councilperson. Do I have to sign another oath?
Yes.
I don't recall doing that when I, you know, I did.
You will this time.
He did it.
I only got one certificate, so I guess.
Took an oath for the term.
Yeah, okay.
Term is over.
You mean I'm not councilman for life? Oaths are annulled for the last four years.
Oh, we gotta take you out of everything he did.
Wonder where that certificate was.
I also think that everybody being present goes along with the team building. I believe it all go, it all goes in together.
What, what about starting earlier? Starting at six, is that a plus? I know.
That's my reason that I, I'm struggling is because I will tell you all personally, I struggled to get here at that time. Um, I work all over the state basically, so it's very hard to have these early meetings. And then stay until one and two and then, you know, like, cause I mean, who knows? Um, but again, we.
We do.
Whatever we do.
Can we do as opposed to six, like six thirty? I, I mean, it seems like it might be, if it's a lighter. Meeting, I mean, maybe we don't have to actually start early, but if we want to start early. I don't know that we need the full hour early. I don't know if this, if that helps with that for you.
My request would be, can we just keep this light? Is there, is it possible to not put things on the agenda that are not important to be there? Time sensitive.
Yeah, I, we could definitely do that. Right now, we would just have the minutes and the, the second reading of that ordinance. Um, and then if there are items that are, you know, timely, we'll put those on there. And then I would also request, could we, could the presentation be kicked to the, the twenty sixth?
The following one, because the twenty sixth that we're talking about.
Alright, yeah, December third.
In order, is this, oh, who knows what's gonna come up by then? So you're saying in order to just, in terms of keeping. I guess I'm just trying to understand then, you know, cause I'm like, I mean, we should have something on our agenda. I don't know if we need nothing. I don't know if we need nothing on the agenda.
Gonna be nothing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, well, I'm just saying that I feel like by the time we start and then the next meeting will be packed. You know, the third will be packed then, you know, so I mean, it's fine. It's just. Um, like I know I've been talking to them about presenting and I was originally thinking they would be able to present tonight. Um, but then pushed it into that one. And so, and I think that'll be important in order for us to then have that information for us to think about different policy things. They're like preparing, so I mean, I guess it could be fine, but it doesn't sound like there's too much on the agenda. So. I guess we can see about that, but I'm for keeping it lighter. To.
I'd support moving to uh, the twenty sixth and starting slightly earlier and keeping it to a light agenda. That keeps everybody at a minimum of times that they need to be present here. I'll come in for oath of office. By the time. I, I'm okay with going with the, the twenty sixth, but I, I wanna defer to the mayor who I think is showing great patience. And if it needs to start at seven, then it starts at seven and we go late.
No, I don't want to start at six.
Oh, okay. I mean.
Trade offs of these, adding things on to meetings like, you know. Cause I, I would prefer to haul it to get here earlier than to be here later. I do. Yeah, so um, six thirty, I don't care, as long as we keep it light and we recognize that like. We have been going very late for a very long time and it is impacting all of us, whether we want to name it or not. Our work, our lives, all these other things, and we need to be able to be more effective in how we're doing business to get out of here at a decent hour. So six o'clock, seven o'clock, either way, twenty six is the date, if everybody is okay with that.
Alright, and we just need to know which time. You, you want to do six or six thirty?
Everybody all want to be here, I will be here. So whatever time y'all want to be here, six thirty is fine. That's a very, oh, that's six thirty. Wait, which, I'm sorry, would you use, which one did you say? Six thirty, I guess, is that the, that's the middle ground?
Thank you, I wanna be here. Alright, so that's good, six thirty, twenty six. Uh, yay. And then the last one I have, so youth mini grants. Um, it's just been a lot going on, so it's taken a while to circle back around to these. Um, so I wanted to have a discussion about those or just kind of the process for us, so. The last time, so it was council member Tucson, King and myself. Is that right? Who were, um, that was the working group around the youth mini grants. Um, and so council member Tucson's not here, so we can't really like. Set our meetings or whatever for that. But one thing that will be helpful that we'll need is actually a list of all of the applicants. So if we can, so if we can ask you to put that together and help to convene us.
Then, I actually got a, a request from someone that had submitted one for an update. I think he's listening tonight. So I will absolutely work with the administration to compile that list for you.
Great, thank you. And then that way we can meet and um. And maybe we can uh, bring something, try to get it on our time to do this. To advocate, allocate it before the end of the year. Um, and so we can try to have something come back to council. By, I don't know, our December third or late second December meeting. I'm just saying that to kind of give us a time frame.
There, is that, is that the extent of the discussion? You just wanted to name?
I mean, I don't know if there's other things. I, I just know I was bringing it up because I was like, oh, we haven't talked about it. We don't have a schedule. I don't know who all applied, so I knew I wanted to make sure that we got that. And since Roland's not here, we can't really talk about the scheduling, so.
So the subcommittee, if you all want to get together and then just bring back like your recommendations, that's typically how we've done it. If y'all want to try to schedule something offline.
Absolutely. Until we know how many applications we have as of right now.
I check, let you know.
Okay.
What has been the usual timeline for this? Cause I remember uh, these coming up m- middle of the summer in the past.
A, a policy was created that the application window would be open from uh, July one until uh, September thirty. Then the committee would review the applications and then bring them forward for approval of, of the whole council.
Previously, we didn't have.
So yeah, last year we did it like fall, but it was just, I think there's a few, a lot of different things and then it, it. I was kind of looking at them as they were coming in. It wasn't, and I was kind of trying to be like, have we reached like a critical mass and then. Um, so yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we turn it back around.
So much. A liaison report, police advisory commission, um, council member Tucson's not here. Um, I don't know if there's anything pressing that came out of the commission, um, but we can get a report from him via email. H R C?
We meet this Thursday here at six P M.
Parks and Arts?
Uh, upcoming meeting actually on the eighteenth.
That worked out, I guess.
Sustainability?
Uh, yeah, so we had a meeting yesterday and um, one, the. We're in process of re um. Re-figuring out Earth Day, um, our commissioner that had been leading that effort um, pulled back. And so now the commission um, is thinking about what they might want to do instead. Um, and there were some interesting ideas about maybe trying to have it be almost like a traveling. Um, event um, to see different kind of infrastructure projects around the city. And so um, so more information to come soon from that. And then also we spent a lot of time um, talking about some letters and outreach and uh, planning. Programming with um, for youth membership. Um, and connecting with different curriculum of the high schools. Um, around sustainability planning and um, specifically around uh, no M O M A. Um, and getting folks engaged within that process. Um, and then we also uh, started to have an update about the uh, community conversation. That the sustainability, sustainability commission co-hosted with I C P J. Um, but that we didn't finish that conversation.
H D C?
H D C is meeting tonight or was meeting tonight.
Uh, planning commission.
Um, I'd missed the last meeting, so I have no report.
B D A? Um, S E M C O G. Watts?
I'm, I, I have not been, I'm like, I don't know that we've had a meeting, but now it makes me feel like I want to check because it's been. I might, it might be coming up.
Um, Urban County, the meeting is upcoming. Um, I, I can't do nothing, I guess. B D A, meeting is next week. Ruth Rappo.
Uh, that meeting was canceled.
Council proposed business, council member King.
So I have two things. I'm still gonna bring it up even though I did hear back from a resident today. And she said she spoke to someone with, in, within the city. So one of the things was, it, I had residents complaining about graffiti on Madison. And on Jefferson in the Wollin area on the wall. By the freeway, but on Madison as well. I, I feel like the one on Madison that has been ongoing. And maybe the police did come out, but residents did, um. They did talk about some frustration they had because nothing was done. They felt like nothing was done to the person that did it and the person is constantly still putting graffiti around the neighborhood. And they were also concerned about cleanup. Other thing I'm wondering is, do we have an update for the marijuana dispensary over here on Heron?
Patient station, um, there. Not anything that we could talk about right, right this moment.
Thank you. Council member Simmons.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I know, I just want to uh, mention, I, I sent a couple of uh, things to the group. One is um, this finding your way, it's a roadmap to social systems and resources in Washtenaw County. Um, and so I just shared that as it may be of use for us. Um, I also shared, I went to a. I went to a presentation um, on harm reduction. Um, and um, it was really interesting, lots of good points. Um, one of the things, this wasn't from that presentation, but I, uh, I saw this statistic. Um, recently, which is that in Washtenaw County, um, I guess this gets to what Cornet mentioned. In Washtenaw County, they, um, they're saying that there's at least, there's been at least uh, fifty two. Um, overdoses in Washtenaw County and thirty two of those uh, happened in the city of Ypsilanti. So far in twenty twenty four. Um, so just the scope of that issue and a couple of other things. Um, they talked about as an example, so they're saying um, harm reduction programs have been on the rise in Michigan since twenty twenty one. And so we can see an increase of resources and evidence um, coming up, up. Since then, they also talked about um, the process for like um, the naloxone. And that really the best access is to connect with people who use drugs. Um, because they actually tend to be the first responders. Um, as opposed to first responders being the first responders. Um, and so um, that that, that has shown to actually be more likely to save a life. Um, they also said that abstinence based treatment tends um, to be the least effective, but receives the most support. Um, and so that's a big challenge, um, because it kind of goes against the evidence. Um, and they also named um, that when thinking about. Um, a lot of the substances, that they're unregulated substances and so it's really. It shows that people are unable to really protect health, um, and don't know really what they're putting in their bodies, which is stuff. This is why we have things like the F D A and other things like that. Or helmets, they talked about. So it was really interesting also to think about how they were situating harm reduction in other ways, like we have seat belts. We have um, helmets, we have blood pressure medication. So some people might eat something that might spike their blood pressure, but they have the medication that helps to support, so it's not actually a threat to their life. Um, and that there's some bills um, at the state level, House Bill five one seven eight. Um, that would help to support more of these efforts statewide. And so um, that's just a few things I pulled out, but I shared that presentation. Um, because uh, some other things will come forward, I'll probably be pulling from that, so I just want to make sure that people have access to it. Um. Then uh, in the C I L I was reading and I just was, wanted to name, I'm interested in learning what our city planner Joshua finds. In the research around housing trends, I saw that, that's a project that's underway and so I look forward to seeing that. And then um, the last thing I'll mention, so um, just to know. For city manager Hilinga, I'll be sending an email. I met with a group of residents. Um, that were naming a lot of concerns around enforcement, you know, my favorite thing. Um, and, and really just like, they kind of were laying out their experience. And um, um, in their issues and the reasons why. They feel um, targeted. And of course, in those spaces, I'm like, I never want people to feel targeted by the city. Um, but I'll just name that this comes up a lot. And so I just wanna, so I'll send you the email with the information, but I would love just to have better response. Um, and to think about, like, how do we actually improve those interactions? Because um, yeah, one of the people was like, you know, just they're, they're like, why do we stay? Should we move? Of course, I'm like, we don't want to be having people thinking about that, but this isn't the first time I've heard that concern. Is why I bring it up, so. I'll send you the details.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Um, I have three items, um, more nuts and bolts. Um, there's an issue on Cornell, just off of Washington, so this is a question for Bonnie. Um, there has been uh, the house at the corner of Roosevelt and, and uh, Cornell. It had uh, some work done on their sewer and there is a. Part of the pavement has been redone and the, and the um, curb has been redone. But there's a gap between the concrete for the curb and that patching. But there's a gap between the concrete for the curb and that patching. So there's a strip about that wide and about four feet long between the carpet. So is that something that Yucca would be responsible for or is that? Okay. Yeah, I talked to the talked to the residents and they just bought the house that was done before they showed up. So it's kind of that transition thing. So I'll follow up with you on that. Uh I wanna address something that uh. Had come up during our office hours, there was a the question that uh there's a gas station on on Washtenaw. That is now posted, it's open twenty-four hours. Um and uh Ed Kurisno was at that that office and he said that that was not zoned for that. Um so I wanted to know if, you know, I believe it's the one next to the uh the car wash. And so a resident brought it up that they didn't think that that was uh possible in that zoning um to have a twenty-four hour uh business. So if I get uh some information on that, that'd be good. And then uh the other thing is there, we've had a um. Inquiry about parking on Owendale, and I followed up with Joe and said. Patrick, we've got that email. And so I followed up with Joe, Joe was the point person. Uh there were two things about this. Uh there was a a resident that was moving in, they got ticketed and people were concerned that they were getting uh targeted. And if there could be a change to that, there's a residential um permit required and they didn't have one. So they got a ticket. It's uh my conversation with Joe was that there was actually only one ticket issued. Um it wasn't a pattern or anything like that. So um I'm saying this to make it public, so Patrick can can understand the emails I got from Joe. The other part of this is that the uh service station on the corner of Owendale and and Washtenaw. Has uh had ongoing legal issues with the city about uh. Um the property they own, uh they bought another lot. So that they could park cars there, but it's not uh allowed during with the zoning they had. So they bought a residence and they were using it for for parking, and they're still using it for parking. And so uh Joe was going to follow up with the city attorney, so now Randy gets to take care of this. But um that is a longstanding issue, but it's not clear and I'll follow up with Joe. Um about where that stands, because I know there were. It's been very contentious. There there was a suit from the city against the the owner. The owner had uh. Restraints issued so that uh they would not harass the neighbors. Um so just making you aware of that, this is a is a an issue, but they are still violating the terms of the agreement. As I had read it a couple of years ago. And so um Randy, I think you and Joe and I and and Patrick should be included in this, um should have a conversation about. What the state of that is and where we can go with that, so.
I just wanted to say um thank you. Um it has, this will be, this is my last meeting before our transitional meeting. So um just wanna say a couple of things. Um thank you for allowing me to serve. Uh it's been an honor and a privilege to serve um the residents of the city and specifically Ward Three over the past two years. Um thank you to uh several members of this body who uh place your trust in me. To fill out the remainder of former Councilwoman Annie Somerville's term. Um to do this service, um as we all know, this is uh can be very difficult, challenging. Um but um very fulfilling work um that we do. Um to make sure that we um lead the city forward in a in a proper um and best way. Um that everyone, you know, wants and sees um for where they want to live. And I will just say also, congratulations and best of luck to incoming um council member fellows. And I wish this body the best and um continue to do the good and the hard work of this community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items. First of all, last Wednesday, as some of you know. Uh we had, I think, the second of our three uh meetings around the community, uh the Ward Two meeting. It's actually held in Ward One, but uh nonetheless, it was close enough. And I I thought it was a good meeting, I I and I mentioned it tonight. Um say that it's, you know, a really good start and getting out into the community. Uh the mayor was there, thank you for that, and as well as the city manager and the police chief. Um our attendance wasn't wasn't too high, wasn't as high as I had hoped, uh but it was a strange week. So uh I think it can be, it can be excused, yeah. But I hope, I hope that all of you who were involved in one way or another thought it was also beneficial and I hope we'll keep uh keep doing that. Secondly, thanks to council member um Will Coxson for bringing up the Owendale issue that was on my list as well. So just add that additional small bit of weight to say, let's move, let's move this forward. It's been going on for a long, long time, as I understand it, uh longer than I've been on this council. And finally, um as this is council member Sweet's last meeting, I wanna commend him for his. Uh his service uh and his work on this body. Uh it's been a pleasure serving with you. Uh and I certainly hope that you'll be staying engaged with the community and uh you bring great value to it and great passion. Uh especially for some of the issues around the outdoors and and arts and parks and recreation. And so um I appreciate you and and wish you good luck.
Um yeah, I, the only things that I have tonight is just to echo that I do think that our community chats have been going very well. Um I do think last week was strange for everyone, no matter, no matter what. And so um attendance was a little lower. The first um community chat was standing room only. Um and I think that as we continue to do these um throughout, you know, the coming years in each quarter. Um that the fever that we're getting is that folks are happy to hear about the wins, some of the struggles. And some of the things that we don't get a chance to actually amplify um in in multiple spaces that's happening um within the city. And so we're gonna be engaging other department heads to come out and be able to be able to talk about the work that's happening in your departments. You ready? Um but this will continue, uh and this was something that I felt really strongly about us doing. And I'm I'm glad to see that it's been well received. Um we will be having to reschedule the uh date for next week. And I believe, I don't know if we made on a day, I'll let the city manager talk about that for the Ward One um community chat. Uh but we're we're still having it, just have to bump it down a little bit. Um and then finally, I also just want to to thank you, Councilman Evan Sweet. Um for all of your work and for sitting to the left of me and being just a avid supporter. Um of the community. Um and again, yeah, the parks and all the outdoor things and, you know, the things that you love, you can tell that you're passionate about it. And that that is something that was really refreshing, right, to see at the table someone who has like a niche and really, you know, goes at it. Especially some of the, you know, outdoors things, so I defer to you. Uh but no, I truly do appreciate your your time um on the board and I do hope that you stay engaged in the community. Um because you have a valuable voice, so thank you so much. Um City Manager?
Kind of piggybacking off of the uh community chats, um so far the first two have been very positive. Um the the um Ward One and Business um sessions had to be rescheduled. Those will be on December eighteenth for Ward One. Um and December nineteenth at the uh D D A meeting. Those are pretty solid uh dates, but if there's any issues, I'll 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 make sure to let council aware. So I have to check with the Ward One location.
You didn't mention a time, I'm sorry.
They start at six o'clock.
Probably both will be, you're saying the D D A one too?
No, the D D A will be at the D D A meeting. Um I wanna say they start at eight thirty, yeah. Um the uh I recently completed the asset management course through Michigan Infrastructure Council. I have been in talks talks with the township about potentially partnering with the uh Shine Program. That was used recently by the D A um provided through life after incarceration, transition and reentry. To potentially clean the corridors um from the township entering the city um come springtime. So those are just beginning talks, nothing's really solid yet, but I just wanted to put that on council's radar. Um staff is meeting with O H M tomorrow to talk about uh the D P D D P W Yard improve improvements. And um potential uh costs to that, so that will be coming to council. Um and I just wanted to congratulate and thank uh Tracy on her election season. It's uh it's very difficult and I thought it was, it 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 really went well. Um I'm enjoying being an inspector and just being able to relax now, so that's pretty great. Um but no, it was a great job and that's all I have.
Yes, honestly, I, nothing but great things, very smooth. The nine days of really voting, everything. Folks were very pleased, so thank you so much. How could I forget? I I'm trying to forget last week, so, you know, it was just crazy for everybody, yeah. Councilmember King, you had something? Oh, I know the residents will ask me because I have been talking about the community chat in Ward One. Why was the time changed and date? I mean, the date, why was the day changed?
Um it was uh something came up with one of the members and uh they would not be able to attend, so we had to change it.
Because I know a lot of community members, even myself, I thought about it as well. Like because it was Ward One that it was last, because again, since I've been on council. I have heard from Ward One residents that they always feel like they're last on the list. So by it being in Ward One and I thought the main reason for the community chats was what was happening on Washington Street. And that was happening in Ward One. I know the residents are not gonna be happy about the rescheduled date in December.
So I'll I wanna name, the community chats were actually in progress way before the Washington Street stuff blew up. This is something that we've been planning. It just happened to coincide with the turn up that happened in in Chambers. So it was not about Washington Street, but we have been talking about it, because we know people wanna hear about it. Um I did made the decision to go backwards because typically we actually do start one, two and three usually all the time. And I, from my experience, and so I went the opposite way because we usually actually do go one, two, three for everything. Um in terms of like official meetings that we've been doing. So, you know, you can let residents know, we do have existing circumstances where we cannot host it on that day. And it gives more time for planning to be present on the eighteenth, honestly, for folks to be able to be there. And there'll be more information to share by that time, because there's always things happening, so they'll be getting more than everybody else. I mean, things happen. We just changed our organizational meeting, because things come up, so that is just what what has happened.
And just wanted a reason, because they are definitely going to act.
Going in this order doesn't have to be the same time for each community chat, so things will get mixed up. It's not always going to go three, two, one, sometimes it'll go one, two, three, sometimes it'll go two, one, three and.
That was my, the point was to try to mix it up in the future, to not always go in chronological order.
And we didn't even get one at Ward Two.
I mean, really, it was two one ones, if we're being real. Um anything for the city manager or anyone else? All right, this is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council, please raise your hand. Oh, Katie. Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you all. This is coming off of a long month. Last month was really hard. And I just wanna say I appreciate all of you. I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing for the city. It was, it was hard. It was hard last month and you guys are all doing a fantastic job. And I appreciate all of you and I appreciate the work that you're doing for the city. It's not easy work. And we all, we did it, and thank you all very much for the work that you guys are doing. And it's just, it means a lot. I think that, you know, we we're supporting the warming shelter and I think that that's good work and it's important work. And um we're doing it, so you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council? Anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing that, I will close public comment and this meeting is.
Look at that, only need a forty-five.
Do we know if someone is.
Oh, look at that.